Hi, everybody. Welcome to today's meeting on June 23rd. I think let's get this meeting called to order at 9:02 a.m. And Executive Director Ross, will you please take roll call?
President Haley?
Here.
Vice President Hagerman?
Here.
Superintendent Horn? Member Kat Neese is not with us today. Dr. Clay?
Here.
Dr. Core?
Here.
Dr. Cruz Rivera?
Here.
Dr. Hightower?
Here.
Member Krevikis is not with us today. Member Meyerson? Dr. Webke?
Here.
President Haley, you have a quorum?
Wonderful. Well, first of all, I just would like to thank everybody for joining us this morning. Just a couple of things. Let me just get my, it's been a busy morning. I'm sure you all have been in the same situation. First of all, I just would love to congratulate Dr. Cruz Rivera. Thank you so much for your service and we're thrilled that your appointment went through. Very exciting for all of us. The other thing is I would like to recognize one of our longtime board members, Julia Meyerson. Today is her last board meeting. And like actually most of us on the board, we started all on the same day. It was March 28th, 2022. And Julia, you have been a breath of fresh air and you have been a delight to this board. You have brought incredible expertise as a charter school leader, as an educator, as a school leader. You have contributed greatly to our A through F committee. You also served with great distinction as you pushed us to do more on K through three literacy. So we thank you so much for your leadership. We thank you for your continued work as we did our ad hoc subcommittee last year and then your work this week with, or this year with the working group. I also want to thank you for your continued devotion to our educators with bringing different topics to our consideration, like last year's TNT presentation, as well as really helping to elevate just the profession. So we just really want to thank you for that. I'm going to miss your questions. You've often brought a lot of great insight to the variety of issues that I've brought before our board. And I hope that you know you have a front and all of us and we may turn to you as a, as a citizen and your continued profession as you help to lead and create high-quality schools across the state. So with that, on behalf of the board, I'm just so excited to be able to give you an apple. So that you all. It's not edible. But it's this beautiful red apple and just to say thank you so much for your contribution to this board. I'll give this to you in a second. Unless do we need to do a photo? I think we should do. Okay. All right, we'll do a quick photo and then I'll wrap up my remarks. So, all right. I think we should all get together with Ms. Julia. Every now and then we get to do fun things as a board. So this is heavy.
Yeah, it's actually quite heavy, yes. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All the things. There's like so much.
There's a lot of it.
Yeah. But seriously, Julia, you've been a phenomenal member and we're going to miss you. So whoever gets to fill the charter representative shoes has big shoes to fill. So, and then finally today, due to the number of items on today's agenda and concerns about maintaining quorum, each speaker will have two minutes to share their remarks. We're not limiting the time during each of the opportunities for the public to share their interest, but we will cap your remarks at two minutes. And so, and as I've said at prior meetings, we just respectfully request that all comments focus on the substance of issues rather than individuals. And finally, we just really appreciate your cooperation, engagement. And with that, let's begin today's meeting. So I will, I believe I now get to yield to you Superintendent Horn? Or do I maybe, is it the students?
No, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Superintendent's report is next.
Okay, thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to mention, well, first I want to add my thanks to Julie. We've, we've dealt with each other as charter owner to, to Department of Education. You were gracious enough to host an important press conference we had there. And I'm the lucky one, I get to continue to work with you. And I also want to add my real happiness for Dr. Cruz Rivera being, being confirmed. I serve also on the Board of Regents and he's a wonderful president of his university. So that made me very happy also. Now, with respect to the handbook, which is on the agenda today. First of all, I want to say that we had a very useful meeting with a group of parents that, that had been critical of, of the handbook. But the meeting was very good because it was a chance for dialogue to go in both directions. And, and we learned a lot. And so I've asked John Ward, the director of the program, to arrange more such informal meetings. And, and we will do that. I think we benefit from that. Secondly, I want to say that we've been negotiating very diligently and at length with the Majority Leader in the House of Representatives. And we made a number of concessions. And while we didn't reach a formal agreement, we are sticking to the concessions that we made. And so I'm going to read the, the relevant parts of the new, of our new proposal, which does not include actual caps on what could be spent on anything. But what it does say is that the department will approve expenses that are reasonably related to an educational or vocational purpose based on consideration of the following factors. First, the special circumstances and educational needs of the qualified student. Second, whether the department has previously approved of the expense or item for the qualified student or for another qualified student in similar circumstances. Third, the primary purpose of the expense or item based on ordinary and customary usage and the stated description of the expense or item. And fourth, the cost or quantity of the expense or item is not greater than what meets the new, the student's education needs and circumstances in relation to other readily available and reasonably, and reasonable alternatives. So that, that's what's in the handbook that, that we've presented. And then in the, in comment, written comments that the board has received, there are two issues that seem to stand out and I've been asked to comment on both of them. The first is those that urged us to adopt what they referred to as a legislative handbook. And I want to say there is no legislative handbook. There, there was a handbook that was created by one legislator, two parents and a, and a staff member. It was not considered by the rest of the legislature in any way. And there's a difference in the role of the legislature and the administrative branches of government. The legislature passes laws which we have to obey and we do. The legislature also delegates certain, certain duties to administrative agencies. And the legislature itself passed a law that said it is the department that will propose to the, to the state board for its consideration, a handbook. And so had there been an attempt by the legislature to write their own handbook, which there was not, it would have been a violation of the division of powers between the legislative and the administrative branches. The second issue was, do we have the authority to limit, as, as we've been doing from my first day in office, expenditures to, to valid educational purposes and at a reasonable cost considering market prices or as more specifically defined in what I read to you. And I think there are two answers to that. The first is that any administrator of taxpayer funds has a duty to do it in a way that's honest and ethical and prudent. So really it's a duty. You, you don't just treat taxpayer funds as something that, that have no reason to the expenditures. Secondly, we are not the final say. Any parent who disagrees with one of our decisions can appeal it to an administrative law judge and then ultimately to the state board. A number of parents have done that and have, there have been 10 cases so far. And, and the issue of whether we had authority to do what we're doing was raised in every one of those cases. And in every one of those cases, the judges ruled in our favor. And, and in some cases that explicitly, yes, the department does have that authority. So this is something that's been judicially determined. So any, we've had some politicians say they don't think we have that authority. They're way off base because it's the judges that determine these things, not politicians. And the judges determine that we did have that authority. That's all I have, thank you.
Executive Director Ross?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Up next is the executive director's report, which is my favorite part of the meeting because we get to honor a couple of awesome kiddos from across the state. I, I just want to give a quick shout out to Shannon Etts from our team who runs this program and in particular does a really great job of soliciting nominations from, from different programs, but in particular with a real eye towards nominations from across the state. Really making sure that all of the amazing kids in all different models of education from every county are represented. And, and that's represented today because we have two kids, two kiddos with us today, both of whom are joining us virtually because they are outside of Maricopa County. But we're super excited to have them with us and super excited to honor them today. So up first, we have Danny Waters. Danny's an incoming 11th grade student from Fredonia High School in Coquenino County. Danny was nominated by biology teacher Caitlin Cole. And Caitlin said that Danny is hardworking, is a student, is an athlete, plays on the varsity teams in basketball, volleyball and softball, participates in school-wide projects, mentors elementary school teachers, is always really reassuring to fellow students and staff and had a great performance in last year's district science fair. So let's welcome Danny.
Hi, guys. I'm Danny. I'm going into my junior year at Fredonia High School, part of the Fredonia-Moccasin Unified School District. I would first like to thank Ms. Cole, my biology teacher, for nomination and for the State Board of Education Award for this honor. I love many things at my school. A big one is the teachers. I love that they always are involved in their job and making us work hard for everything we have. I love that this school district is smaller, which gives us students an advantage that teachers have more one-on-one time with us. Other thing I love is everyone who works in this school district wants to see us kids succeed. Accomplishments are very cool in this school district. Our administration makes sure all the students know that we're doing amazing. At the end of every quarter, we have an awards assembly where kids get, who got higher school score on their benchmark testing or any get a growth award. Some accomplishments I have received in academics are high growth in both English and math, signed by Ms. Superintendent Doreen Mudrow. I also received the outstanding academic award for holding a 3.5 GPA or higher. Many people push me to school, but my mom is my main one. She is always telling me how smart I am and how far I could go with my grades. Also thanks to my teachers for always believing in me. I'm a big person in athletics. Some accomplishments I have in that field are in softball, first team all-region player, all-conference awards, all-region awards for basketball and volleyball as well. At the end of every school year, my school does a sports banquet for athletics, for the athletes and their families. The coaches all vote for overall female and male athlete of the year in our school. I was blessed to get handed the female athlete of the year this past year. When I received this award, I was described by coaches as ferocious, stubborn, leads with grit, heart, purpose, and gives everything she has in pursuit of being the best athlete she can be physically, mentally and emotionally. She sets the bar high and holds herself and others to it, even when it's uncomfortable. She leads by example, encourages those around her and pushes her whole team to grow. She is learning that growth comes with mistakes, not perfection. Her, her heart is fully in it and it shows in everything she does. She's quick-witted and constantly joking. The coaches at this school are very amazing. They always are pushing us athletes to be better in sports and just in life. My parents and family are my biggest inspiration with sports. They have helped me get to where I am now. If that's late nights in the batting cages or taking me to mental classes or taking me to camps for, to athletically grow. What has helped me most as a student in this school? I would have to say sports. Sports pushed me to have good grades. Sports pushed me to improve my attitude and life skills. Sports helped me realize that not everything is perfect and does not get handed to you and you must work for your success. My future plans are all over the place right now, just going into my junior year. During my last two years of high school, I will be working towards getting my CNA. So when I graduate high school, I have my CNA certification. After I graduate high school, I'd love to pursue my athletic career in softball and play at least two years in college. While playing in college, I'd love to become a photographer. After two years of being an athlete in college, I'd love to go further in nursing school to become a registered nurse. While doing that schooling for that, I want to get married and start a family. Thank you, guys, for having me so much. I was blessed, I loved it. Thank you, guys.
Stay with us just a sec, Danny. We're going to do a photo.
All right. Danny, we have you up on our projector screen, so we're going to move so there around you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Our next state board student of the month is Abigail Hernandez, who is an, another incoming 12th grade student this time and was nominated by Principal Juan Rojas from their Pima JTED. The Principal Rojas said that Abigail is a dedicated student studying biomanufacturing, is committed to academics and to community service, is a student ambassador at Pima JTED, is a representative of the Pima JTED Student Governing Board and helps connect students to community resources around Tucson and serves as a true leader in the community. Abigail?
Good morning, Board of Education and guests. My name is Abigail Hernandez and I just want to say it is an incredible honor to be standing as much as I can here today as one of Arizona's Students of the Month. I would like to thank my Vice Principal Rojas as well as the rest of my JTED family but are standing by my side and supporting me every step of the way. I was and continue to be raised on the Posco Yaki Reservation, a place where opportunities can feel limited and many students like mine, like me, grew up believing that good enough is all that we deserve. But I have learned that circumstances do not define our potential, but our commitment to uplifting others does. That lesson has guided me every part of my journey. Throughout high school, I have taken every honors class my school offers while maintaining a 4.0 GPA. I studied biotechnology and CNA courses earning certifications in both. And as mentioned, I serve as HOSA President, Student Ambassador and Governing Board Representative for my district. This year, I placed second place in the state in HOSA for paired speaking and qualified to compete internationally, a moment that I will never forget. And I am also a proud member of National Honor Society. Beyond the classroom, I am a Sewing Remedies Fellow through the Community Food Bank of Southern Arizona, working to address hunger and health inequity in marginalized communities like Miami. And this summer, where I am right now, I am a Keys Research Intern at the University of Arizona, working under the Director of Bio5, Vanessa Stupion, and studying how inexperienced drivers respond to sudden hazards and how engineering and human-centered designs can work together to save lives on our roads. This fall, like as mentioned, I will be going into my senior year and I plan to begin EMT training so I can serve people in moments where compassion matters the most. Looking ahead, I would like to study biomedical engineering and enter the University of Arizona's Advanced Pathway to Medical Education, an early admissions program for future physicians. So one day I can hopefully become an anesthesiologist who brings not just skill, but humanity to every person that I meet. And I share all of this not to tell you just what I have done, but to show you what is possible when a student from an often overlooked community is truly seen, supported and believed in. To my parents, thank you for your sacrifices and your endless love that keeps me grounded and driven. And to every mentor that I've had, whether that's at Keys or the Community Food Bank, thank you for opening doors that I never knew existed and showing me how to turn my knowledge into service. And finally, to the board, please remember that students like me are not burdens. We are Arizona's most valuable investment. Every dollar that you can commit toward programs like JTED, Career Pathways and strong community partnerships does so much more than fun supplies or classrooms. It builds hope, strength and confidence and shapes future in places where it matters the most. Grades and test scores can be measured, yes, but what truly transforms lives is choosing to see the person first. Science and medicine are my tools, but people are my purpose. And I'm here today because caring educators, mentors and my family refuse to limit my dreams. And in return, I will keep showing up for my community, for my patients and for every student who needs proof that where you start does not define how far you can go. Thank you for seeing me and please keep seeing and supporting students like me tomorrow.
So Abigail, we're going to do a photo. So like the board's going to, you're, you're being projected on the wall, our screen, and the board's going to sort of gather around you to do a photo that, that Ms. Etts will send to you.
All right, everyone. One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome, thank you, guys.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. That concludes the executive director's report.
Awesome. Well, thank you and it was wonderful to hear from our awesome students, Danny Waters and Abigail Hernandez. I have no doubt that they will go on and do amazing things, hopefully here in Arizona. So just thank you so much for your contribution and your leadership. We are now moving on to item two. This is a call to the public. This is a time for the public to come on, comment on items not on today's agenda or on the consent portion of the agenda. As a reminder, the board does not respond directly to the call to the public. And additionally, and, and the speakers are not allowed to cede their time to another speaker and personal attacks are not appropriate. Given today, the high number of individuals that have requested to speak, all speakers will be limited to two minutes. So with that, Deputy Director Duplanti, do we have any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Yes, we do. First up will be Shelley Boggs, followed by Patrick Mannion, followed by Katie McPherson. Superintendent Boggs? No Superintendent. Patrick Mannion will be up next, followed by Katie McPherson, followed by Kathleen Nguyen. Mr. Mannion?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. So, good morning. As we're all kind of well aware, this is, we're going back to March 2025 at the regular board meeting. In the fall of 2020, a teacher hot on the heels of a recent sexual assault incident in the Tolason District came to work in Chandler District. Not long after he began teaching, approximately 13 to 14 girls started making accusations about the gentleman improperly touching them, visiting them at their places of work. And these were all separate reports. Fast forward, instead of calling the police as the law requires, CUSD administrators illegally kept it all in-house and they ran a sham internal investigation designed to shelter the district from potential liability. Fast forward a little bit more, the teacher was later allowed to quietly illegally resign with no consequences and only a parent's proactive reporting to the investigations unit sparked any action at all and nothing actually ever came from CUSD 80 or even though the law actually requires it. This January, the P-PAC finally heard testimony and recommended consequences to y'alls. But at your March board meeting, all of us unfortunately were had. And members of the board secretly communicated amongst themselves using text messaging to rig a positive outcome for the respondents. I'm sorry to make that accusation against y'all, but it's, it's reality. They stood, they ironed out the details and optics in an, basically a bogus executive session with a bit of a Jedi mind trick. Hey, we'll order new individual hearings. However, Arizona Administrative Code R7-2-711 makes no provision for this.
Mr. Mannion, thank you so much for your comments today.
You did eight, eight zero was your recommendation to do that. It was a bogus legal premise.
Mr. Mannion, thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Katie McPherson, followed by Kathleen Nguyen, followed by Bridget Vega. Katie?
Morning. Violence, including sexual violence, can only prevail when the environment allows for it. Your vote on March 24th helped perpetuate that environment. Shortly after that meeting, I was forwarded texts and emails exchanged between board members during the session. They showed panic, cowardice and collusion. Board members texted during the meeting acknowledged the P-PAC finding that the CUSD administrators' testimony was shocking and stunning. Executive Director Ross emailed, called it an unusual step for President Haley to want to clarify her quiet no vote, dissuading her from going public about her true feelings. What is unusual is that 14, 12 to 18-year-old girls have shown more courage than this state board. It was painfully clear that many board members didn't even really understand what you were voting on. The vote was supposed to be about, did the administrators protect these children and did they uphold the education profession? After 32 hours of testimony, your P-PAC's vote was an emphatic no. No one from CUSD, MCSO, MCAO or this agency has acknowledged that Mr. Power is the named suspect in an alleged on-campus sexual assault and an open investigation for intercourse with the opposite sex of a minor. That survivor waited two years to come forward while her mental health collapsed and her family suffered in silence. Mr. Matthew Nielsen was correct. We have no idea what happened at Castile High School and now we have no idea what happened at another school whose administrators did not do a proper investigation. I respectfully am asking this board, whether you're a girl dad or a boy mom or just a leader in this state, right now, the message to Arizona's children is this. When sexual misconduct happens in front of you or to you, the adults in charge are too selfish and too scared to do something about it. Prove them wrong, please.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Kathleen Nguyen, followed by Bridget Vega and followed by Carolyn Shin Barrett. Kathleen? No Kathleen, how about Bridget?
Good morning. They passed the trash from the west to the east and in doing so, they betrayed the very children they were trusted to protect. Neither Tolason nor CUSD reported, followed up or checked to ensure the children were safe. When CUSD learned Patrick Power was under criminal investigation, they did not act. Instead, they were silent, protecting their image and power at the expense of our children. They said nothing while a predator remained near students unsupervised. They, this only came to light because the brave, courageous parents labeled as disgruntled by CUSD lawyers chose to speak up. They saw what the district refused to see. This wasn't a boundaries issue. This was grooming. It was a path to assault. Because the leaders failed to act, we may never know how many children now carry trauma for life. Let that sink in. The system heard cries for help and turned away. Sexual abuse doesn't appear out of nowhere. It thrives in places where leadership looks the other way. You chose silence over safety, power over protection, reputation over responsibility. You were supposed to amplify the children's voices, not silence them. Reminder, the youngest victim was 15. This man was 67 years old. The children came forward saying, he picked her up by her waist, off the floor, onto the desk. He would find a way to hug or touch the girls in class. Blank was finishing a test and he nate- Blank was finishing a test and he nate, and he grabbed a girl's arm and pulled her in for a hug. She were, she told me how uncomfortable it made her feel and wanted to drop out. I dropped out because I saw this happening, I didn't want it to happen to me. He invited a minor to a gun show, offering to pick her up. When they were in photography, he moved the girls and placed them in positions for photos. Many students reported uncomfortable and unwanted touch. Protecting children is not an option, it's your duty. History will remember who stood by the children and who stood by negligence. What's done in the dark will come to light, in the end, God prevails. To the children, we hear you, we see you, we stand by you, we will not stay silent.
Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, it looks like our last speaker is not online, and so that concludes this call to the public.
Okay, moving on to item three. This is the consent agenda. Is there an item or items from the consent agenda that a board member would like to pull and discuss? Dr. Clay, did you want to pull one? Great, is that item 3L?
Yes, ma'am, that is item 3L.
Okay, great. Do I have any other items that need to be polled? Okay, with that, I would like to pull our, we'll vote, we'll do two votes. The first one is item, a vote on item 3A through 3K and 3M. Do I have a motion for that first vote?
So moved.
Dr. Hagerman, do I have a second? Member Meyerson, seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing that they're non-motion carries? And then we have item 3L. Do I have a motion for item 3?
President Haley.
Oh.
Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Dr. Clay did pull the item, so we need to hear from Dr. Clay.
Dr. Clay, sorry, just moving along.
I apologize, I was having some technical difficulty. The item is K. Just to correct that.
The item, is that the Arizona Summer EBT Technology Innovation Grant? Or is it the consideration to determine noncompliance for USFR by Valley Union High School District?
Yes, ma'am, the last.
Okay, so item 3L.
With that, okay, maybe I have the wrong one, I had K on mine, but it's, it's basically the one with Valley Union. I'm recusing my vote because Valley Union is in Coates County.
Okay, great, thank you. Given that, do we have a motion for item 3L?
So moved.
Dr. Hagerman, do we have a second?
Second.
Member Webke, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll now move to item four. This is another call to the public. This is a time for the public to comment on items on today's general session. As a remember the board, as a reminder, the board does not respond directly during the call to the public. Additionally, speakers are not allowed to cede their time to another speaker, and personal attacks are not appropriate. As we have a large number of speakers registered today, all speakers will be limited to two minutes. And with that, Deputy Director Duplanti, do we have any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, yes, we do. First up will be Harmony Early, followed by Gwendolyn Early, followed by Calvin Early. Harmony?
Esteemed members of the board, Superintendent Horn, just a few minutes ago, over a dozen senators and representatives issued a letter to this board expressing serious legal concerns with the drafted handbook that Superintendent Horn released only a few days ago. They urged this board to delay the acceptance of this draft until these issues are resolved. Superintendent Horn has touted major concessions in removing the price caps while instead adding arbitrary and subjective language that opens the doors for price limits on every purchase. Now Mr. Horn, Mr. Ward, and their staff will be deciding what our children's educational needs are. They, they will limit the purchases based on what they decide, quote, meets the students' educational needs and circumstances. Mr. Ward stated in a town hall that his staff is not trained on what sped students need for their educations, and yet they will now be the ones making this decision. Furthermore, this draft adds that policies can and will be added or redacted in response to newly enacted legislation, court decisions, rule changes, and/or suggestions for best practices. This means the rules are constantly changing without notice. If parents cannot trust the handbook to guide the use of the program, ESAs become a legal and financial minefield. I ask that you send this draft back to the ADE to remove the language that will make this program hazardous for parents who are trying to comply in good faith. I, I furthermore ask that you send it back until it is legally acceptable. R7-2-1503 gives you the authority to do so. Please don't take away the empowering part of this program that allows us parents to choose highly specialized education for our children.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is, okay, Calvin Early, followed by Seth Early, followed by Angela Faber.
Dear members of the board, my name is Calvin, and I'm a homeschooled junior. I would like to thank you for volunteering your time to the education of Arizona's children. The ESA program has been much appreciated in my family. I have four siblings, and the cost of curriculums and fine arts education adds up to quite a bill. For years, my parents have paid taxes for public schools while also paying for our own education. Now with ESA, all Arizona kids, including me, can benefit from education funding. I've been involved in musical theater for several years now. The ESA has helped every step of the way in pursuing my passion. I've been in lead roles in several productions. As well as building talent in those areas, involvement in theater has established a strong work ethic in me that has been essential in different areas of my education, volunteer work, and life in general. Again, I am grateful for your dedication to my education and for everyone who has fought for this program. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Seth Early, followed by Angela Faber, followed by Lexie Faber.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Seth Ierly, and I am a homeschooled freshman. First, I wanted to thank you for giving up your time to serve on the board. I also wanted to share how amazing the ESA program has been for me. I have been able to pursue my musical interests, and without ESA, it would have been financially difficult to do so. As the youngest of five, we often pieced together leftover curriculum for me to use. Now with ESA, I can get new math books. Because of ESA, I have been able to pursue my musical, my musical theater, I've been able to develop my skills in musical theater, singing, acting, and dancing. I hope to be a Mechatronics engineer, and I am thankful that ESA can be used to provide STEM kits to advance my knowledge. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Angela Faber, followed by Lexie Faber, followed by Brandy Blackford. Angela?
Thank you. Good morning. Dear members of the board, I'm asking you to vote no on the 2025-26 ESA handbook. The process has been a mess from the start. Parents submitted over 1,000 concerns, and not one of them has been meaningfully addressed. The department ignored us, delayed us, and then pretended to listen while moving forward with the same harmful language. That's not public input, that's performance. At the town hall, John Ward openly admitted that there's not even an ESA qualified to approve associated goods for special education students. This should alarm every one of you. Families are being denied critical supports by a department that doesn't even have someone trained to make these calls. And this morning, thankfully, ledger legislators that we've been working with released a formal letter warning that the handbook includes provisions that are unlikely unlawful, unenforceable, and clear overreach of the ADE's authority. They specifically called out vague language, excessive documentation. That letter confirms what parents have been saying all along. This handbook is not lawful and needs to be stopped immediately. Superintendent Horn has claimed legislators didn't support parents, but we know that's false. We've worked directly with lawmakers who did review our concerns, did read the draft, and did raise the alarm. We thank them for standing with us when the department would not. The handbook is filled with overreach, vague rules, and shifting standards. It creates confusion, not clarity. It punishes families instead of supporting them. We shouldn't have to go through appeals, we should have lawful, consistent guidelines from the beginning. This is your chance to stop the damage. Please vote no and send this back until it's fixed. Thank you all very much for your time.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Lexie Faber, followed by Brandy Blackford, followed by Stacy Brown. Lexie? No Lexie? Brandy?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I appreciate the work that has gone into the newest draft of the handbook. The removal of spending caps and purchase time limits is a significant and positive step forward. However, I want to express concern, the same concern that the letter recently sent to you today expresses, over the introduction of vague and interpretive language throughout the new draft. This ambiguity is always, already causing confusion and concern among families, as seen in parent groups and forums. Without clear definitions and examples, the interpretation of allowable purchases is left up to individual discretion, something we've already seen lead to inconsistent and inequitable decisions. I respectfully ask the board to consider recommending the following to the ADE before you vote, and adding to the letter from the legislature sent today. Add clarifying language throughout the handbook to reduce ambiguity and improve consistency and implementation. Consider incorporating parts of the 530 handbook to provide helpful clarity and structure to parents. Encourage ongoing year-long communication and feedback from families, not just during handbook revision windows. Parents are stakeholders and need to be part of the process in real time. Require a reevaluation of all denied purchases since March, particularly those rejected due to now removed spending caps or restrictions not reflected in the current draft. Families should not be penalized under rules that no longer exist and never did. This program works best when families and administrators are aligned in understanding and expectations. Clear, consistent guidance is essential for the success of both students and the ESA program as a whole. Thank you for your time and for considering these requests.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Stacy Brown, followed by Lynn Fox Embry, followed by Dominic Embry. Stacy?
Good morning. Although the department removed the caps from, I'm sorry, although the department removed the caps, most of the other parent feedback from parents still hasn't been reflected in the handbook. I request that the parent-driven version be added to today's agenda for a vote because it incorporated the 1,000 comments submitted from parents, offering the clarity parents have consistently asked for to make the handbook a more practical and user-friendly handbook. This isn't about delaying the process, it's about getting it right and right the first time. Parents deserve a handbook that's clear, legally sound, and reliable, and so they don't have to go back and forth with the department just to understand how this program works. I ask you consider the warnings from the legislators with how this handbook is damaging to our children. According to Rule R7-2-1503, the board can approve a handbook after July 1st, and it will become effective immediately upon its approval. I ask you vote no to this handbook and take into consideration the parent feedback today along with the legislator's requests. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Lynn Fox Embry, followed by Dominic Embry, followed by Jay Griffin. Lynn?
Good morning, members of the board, President Haley and Superintendent Horn. As you know, I'm Lynn Fox Embry, I've been here a long time, and I'm an advocate for families, and I'm an advocate for my three children. First, I'd like to say thank you Superintendent Horn and Mr. Ward for allowing me to have a seat at the table to discuss the prior draft handbook. I do believe we made some real progress in that. However, the timeliness of this coming out was not great. There's a lot of players in the backfield that was keeping that from happening. However, page 22 of chapter three of this new draft handbook is very unclear to parents. Parents are still questioning, what does that really mean to them? So I'm asking you today, before you vote, to hopefully have Mr. Ward answer some of the questions during his presentation, or for you, the board, to ask questions, since you can't answer my question, maybe you can ask questions for us to understand, this is a parent handbook, what does that page really mean? Will the policies be adopted and how, in real life? What happens if a purchase is truly denied? Families are afraid to use this handbook. They're afraid that they're going to end up having to pay funds back, and that's not what any of us want. We want to be good stewards of this money. We want to operate in good faith. So I'm asking the board to ask those hard questions, and again, I just saw the letter from the legislators myself 10, 15 minutes ago. So I do have some concerns about what we can do to get a handbook that is truly a parent-driven handbook, a parent handbook that we can read. Because I think that's my biggest concern is, I'm well informed on what's going on, and I still have questions on page 22. And I know that we really need to have this to be clear language that everybody can understand. It should not be legal ease. It should be what every family can pick it up and go, okay, I can buy this, this, or that, and I can't buy this. So I'm asking you to please ask those hard questions to the board and make sure this is clear language for everybody to understand. Thank you. And Dominic is not here today.
Thank you. President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Jay Griffin, followed by Londa Wagner, followed by Diane Green. Jay? No, Jay?
Good morning, thank you, members of the board. My name is Jay Griffin. Several items on today's agenda, some which have already been moved. The board is taking action to, basically adverse action against people and organizations seeking to process revocations and negotiated settlements, denials, and so forth via bulk motion or by consent agenda. The problem is, this approach risks shielding individualized due process failures from scrutiny, and if the board is voting on disciplinary action against specific educators, each action should include public record of hearing, evidence, and procedural sufficiency under the law. Bulk approvals also risk violating open reading law by obscuring public deliberation on disciplinary measures. Additionally, the record should reflect whether the educator consented to surrender or negotiated terms under duress or misunderstanding. Will the board require individualized cases, due process history, and public deliberation before approving enforcement by a bulk motion? If not, this pattern risks creating systemic due process failures. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Londa Wagner, followed by Diane Green, followed by Carolyn Shin Barrett.
Good morning. My name is Londa Wagner. I am a mother of four, and I am the culinary arts teacher in Globe, Arizona, at Globe High School. It is a rural school, rural Arizona, where over 100 years old is our building. Unfortunately, so are many of the things in our building are quite old. Until recently, my students were cooking on equipment from the 1960s, and that was verified. This is not an exaggeration, we had many things that were outdated. We didn't have the luxury of funding. So my students, motivated, passionate, and caring, they earned money to buy our new stoves, they catered, they fundraised, and we were able to replenish our appliances. We should not have had to do that. We should have had funding for our rural schools. We have very intelligent children in the rural communities that are not giving the opportunities that our children in the cities are given. So we would hope that we can get some funding to rural Arizona. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Diane Green, followed by Carolyn Shin Barrett, followed by Adrian Nutter. Diane? No Diane. Carolyn Shin Barrett was from Call to the Public number two, but had a technical issue. She's online now, so Carolyn?
How are you? Hi.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Yes, hi, yeah, thank you for having me. So I'm sure you guys are aware that our alternate teacher program shut down unexpectedly in December. And I was just calling, I was just trying to ask if it's at any at all possible for us to, instead of transitioning into IT, because they are asking for more tuition, if we've already gotten our fingerprint checked and cleared, plus we submit our passing practices or NES scores, as well as our completed transcripts from classroom, if we're able to go through the certification process independently of an alternate teacher
The board is not able to answer questions in Call to the Public, because that can because that could include your comments.
Oh, they're not able to answer that? Okay. Do they have any direct say as far as certification goes for prospective teachers that are trying to move to Arizona to teach?
Carolyn, so the protocol for Call to the Public is that the board is not actually able to respond at all? To, yeah--
I apologize, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. However-- We do encourage you, please email your questions in to our inbox on our website, and we'll be happy to respond.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you, Adrian. Okay, great.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Adrian Nutter, followed by Sharice Gunther, and then followed by Jeanette Aldina Perry. Adrian?
Thank you, good morning. Yeah, I moved my family to Arizona about two years ago. A big part of the reason I moved my family here was the ESA program and the promotion by the state of school choice. I think that's really great. You guys seem to be one of the earlier states to get in on that. And it's been a really positive experience for both of my daughters. My older daughter was enrolled the first year that we moved in. I found it really easy to get the funds for the school tuition when we needed to pay for other things, like school uniforms or she had a project in school. Being able to submit receipts online in the ESA, it seemed like it was really easy. I didn't have any problem understanding what could be deducted, what couldn't, how the submission process worked, and how the reimbursement process worked. It was all really clear. So the comments I'm hearing this morning, it sounds like we're not going to have that kind of really clear, easy-to-follow process anymore. I find that really concerning. A couple of things I would like to say from the financial perspective. One, like I said, I did choose to move my family to the state. I work remotely. I work in a field where I can move my family pretty much anywhere. I did consider other states like Texas or Florida, but I chose here, and I brought my income here. And that's something that has been a benefit to the state and continues to be as long as we live here. The other thing, as far as I'm aware, the ESA program, on average, is $2,000 less a year than what you spend to educate kids in public school. So anything that you do to make it more difficult to use the ESA program to drive parents and families and kids back to public schools is going to cost the state more money. It's going to cost myself as a taxpayer more money. That's not what you guys want to do. You guys are looking to save the state money. You guys are looking to provide educational choices for families. You need to make this clear, easy to understand, easy to follow, and you need to remember that the families and the kids come first. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Sharice Gunther, followed by Jeanette Aldina Perry, followed by Diana Weaver. Sharice?
Good morning, members of the board. My heart is heavy as I speak today. I was deeply moved by the students who were honored earlier. I appreciated what they shared, and I'm grateful that today's focus is where it should be, on the students, who must remain our most important consideration. At the same time, my heart broke as I listened to those previous speakers who spoke on behalf of students who have been grossly unheard and who continue to be unheard. Members of the board, the fact that you serve in this role voluntarily, offering your time, experience, and leadership, tells me that you care deeply about Arizona's future. It's clear that you've already given so much in both your personal and professional lives, and your continued service is something that I deeply respect. I believe you are here to do what's right. I'm here today as a parent of students who matter, students who are thriving now thanks to the Empowerment Scholarship Account Program. I'm asking you to speak out on their behalf and on behalf of every student who depends on this program. If you have not yet had the opportunity to read the letters sent to you today from members of our legislator, I would like to quote from it now only because I feel like I cannot say it better. Otherwise, I really would try. They said, "We believe that several provisions in the draft handbook are very likely unlawful and unenforceable because they are unintelligible, arbitrary, and inconsistent with state law." They said, "First, the draft handbook introduces unnecessary documentation barriers that are not supported by statute, requiring parents to submit additional documentation for purchases." As President Horn said-- or not, excuse me, President Horn-- Superintendent Horn said earlier, he said, hey, they all have the ability to go before a judge, but we are grossly unprepared to go before a judge when there's an attorney-at-law who can present against us, and we don't have the skills like they have. They continued to just say, and I will end with, they said, "Because of the short timeline and limited public comment period, we urge you to delay consideration of the draft handbook to ensure that its provisions align with the Arizona law. At a minimum, we suggest removing overly restrictive cost guidelines, burdensome documentation, and any language suggesting that either the board or the department--
Thank you so much for your remarks.
--may allow you to modify the handbook policies." I appreciate you all very much.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Jeanette Aldana Perry, followed by Diane Weaver, followed by Nicole Harple. Jeanette?
Good morning. My name is Jeanette Aldana Perry, and I'm from Costa Grande, District 16. Thank you to this board for the time you've given to me and other passionate ESA parents over the past four months as we've navigated the saga of the proposed 2025-2026 ESA Parent Handbook. I hope you've come to understand just how much ESA means to us and that you will carry our voices and our passion with you as you continue making these important decisions. I also want to express my appreciation to the ADE, especially Superintendent Horn, Mr. Ward, and Reverend Wood for taking the time to meet with me and a few other parents in person and for following through on your commitment to host a town hall. At last month's meeting, I asked for a seat at the table, and to ADE's credit, I was given one. All that being said, as the chicks once sang, "Forgive, sounds good, forget, I don't think I could." I'm here today to offer a parent's perspective on the June 18th draft of the ESA handbook, specifically the language on page 22. While I believe the examples listed there are well-intentioned, the way they're presented starts to look a lot like informal rulemaking, terms like reasonably related and based on consideration of introduced uncertainty and drift away from the legislative intent. Parents like me want to follow the rules. We really do. But we need clear, lawful guidance, not vague language that invites shifting interpretations when handbooks begin adding criteria that aren't rooted in statute or rule. It creates confusion, overreach, and legal risk for ADE. Beyond the legal concerns, ESA's public image matters. We keep hearing about mung pung pens and golf simulators, but those stories don't reflect the truth for most of us. We're just families trying to give our kids the best shot, often under tough circumstances. Superintendent Horn, I want to thank you for your response to 12 News and Mr. Craig Harris and his latest string of ESA hit pieces. I appreciated your comments highlighting how public schools spend significant funds on music and dance teachers and how opposing private lessons for ESA students while supporting them in public schools is, in your words, "the view of hopeless Philistines." That made my day. In closing, I want to say this. Oversight is necessary, but trust matters too.
Ms. Aldana Perry, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. God bless you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Diane Weaver, followed by Nicole Harple, followed by Heidi Will. Diane?
Thank you so much for your hard work on this board. The most recent department-proposed handbook will sow doubt and confusion among parents, put parents into financial struggle just for trying to follow the rules, and increase the burden on the judicial system. Judges and courts need to be focused on promoting public safety, not on mediating squabbles between parents and the department as a result of an unclear handbook. Many parents left district schools for ESA because the only way they could get the support their kids need was to spend money on an attorney battle constantly over IEPs and pursue legal action. We should not turn the ESA program into a mirror of that model, which is not fair and unduly burdens disability families. Parents need to know that following the handbook means they can focus on educating their children and not on wondering if they will need to appeal purchases or be audited for purchases that the department previously approved. ADE previously said they want to listen to and work with legislators. Please send this draft back to the ADE and request that they revise this handbook to be in line with the public letter that was provided to the Arizona Board of Education by legislators dated June 23, 2025. R. 7-21503 permits you to do so. Please ensure that the handbook supports parents in providing the individualized education that our children desperately need. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Nicole Harple, followed by Heidi Will, followed by Amanda Pappas. Nicole?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your service to Arizona students. Over the past several months, I've raised concerns that remained unresolved. As parents, we had hoped the ADE would recognize how clearly the parent-driven handbook addressed the real issues that ESA families face. Thousands of signatures show that it wasn't just a few upset parents. It was a collective voice with legal and legislative support, not just one, as Horn claims. Yet, comments from Mr. Horn in the town hall and his emails segregating private, sped, and homeschool parents made it clear that the handbook was dismissed outright. This new draft handbook still raises serious concerns, not only for us, but also for the 14 legislators that just sent in a letter. Language written throughout continues to allow for arbitrary, inconsistent denials, leaving families afraid to make purchases. However, it does remove hard caps and clarifies a few areas better than the current version that we are under. That said, we are asking for the following. Stop administrative overreach. Prevent untrained staff from making subjective pricing denials on essential items like computers, home economics, or vocational tools. We-- You can stop excessive luxury items without stopping parents from purchasing higher-quality products and products that best benefit their students. Parents need clear, consistent guidelines with room for flexibility, regardless of whether a student is sped or not. Hidden caps and undefined denials harm all ESA families, including mine, who have been in the program for nine years but are not sped students. Require quarterly town halls that are truly for listening, not to just check a box. Reinstate the preapproval process for out-of-the-ordinary items, thus ensuring families aren't penalized for making what they believe to be an approved reasonable purchase. Allow prepayment across contract years, especially for classes, camps, and subscriptions homeschool families rely on, not just school tuitions. If a family doesn't renew their ESA, they can just repay those costs as they exit. Finally, ensure clear, inclusive communication that supports all ESA students, homeschoolers, sped, and private schools alike. Structure, fairness, and transparency prioritize. Thank you for your time.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Heidi Will, followed by Amanda Pappas, followed by Allison Hilliker. Heidi?
Good morning, Board President Haley, members of the board, and Superintendent Horn. I ask you today to vote to approve the department's June 18th draft of the 2025-2026 ESA Parent Handbook, if possible, requiring the few amendments that other parents have requested today. My support may come as a surprise, considering that at the last three board meetings, I urged you to not approve earlier drafts. But in those same comments, I also called on the department to remove the stipending caps from the handbook, advocate for increased staffing through legislative funding, and improve communication with parents. Since last month's meeting, the department has taken meaningful steps on all three fronts. Not perfectly, but I believe in recognizing progress, even when it's incomplete, rather than rejecting any effort that falls short of perfection. This handbook is still not perfect. There are changes I wish had been made that were not. That said, it is a clear improvement over the March and April drafts and over the outdated handbook that it must replace. I understand many parents fear that the vague language in place of hard caps could end up limiting educational flexibility in practice. But today, I choose hope over fear. I hope that the department will now approve purchases that were previously rejected under prematurely implemented handbook drafts. I hope for continued dialogue with parents and legislators, leading to further improvements in future handbooks. I hope that parents will advocate for ESA budget increases as strongly as they have for handbook changes. And I hope that the legislature will respond with the resources that ESA team needs to properly staff and support this growing program. And finally, I hope that the department and this board will be able to distinguish between waste, fraud, and abuse and unconventional but valid educational choices. Please keep an open mind as you hear appeals and help restore parents' trust in the administration of this life-changing program. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. It looks like the next Amanda and Allison have either logged off or not online. Next up is Simone Bell, followed by Sierra Addington, followed by Kathy Visser. Simone?
Yeah, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, you can, go ahead.
Good morning, board members. First, I want to express my sincere gratitude for your decision to remove the hard caps and yearly limits on ESA expenses. This change demonstrate your commitment to truly individualized education. Additionally, I understand that the legislators sent a letter this morning requesting that the 2025-2026 handbook not be approved today. I respectfully ask that you honor this legislative request. However, I'd like to address concerns regarding the current expenses approval criteria, particular the emphasis on cost-effectiveness and reasonable alternatives. Here's the reality. The cheapest alternative is often the poorest quality. When we purchase low-cost educational materials or technology, they frequently break down much faster than higher-quality options. This means we end up replacing items multiple times, ultimately wasting more of my students' money than if we had invested in the quality from the beginning. A $200 tablet that breaks after six months it needs replacing three times costs more than a $400 tablet that will last us three years. A curriculum that is cheapest upfront but requires constant supplementation ends up costing more than a comprehensive program that meets all initial requirements. Furthermore, the term reasonable is subjective and problematic. What seems reasonable to department administrators may not align with what ESA parents, who know our children the best and know their learning channels and disabilities, consider reasonable for their children's success. When a child has dyslexia, ADHD, autism, or other learning differences, standard reasonable alternatives often simply don't work, no matter how cost-effective they may be. I urge you to consider revising these guidelines to emphasize educational effectiveness over pure cost comparison. Trust parents to make responsible decisions and recognize that investing in quality educational resources is the most fiscally responsible approach in the long term. Thank you for your time and continued support of Arizona ESA families.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Looks like Sierra's not online. So next up is Kathy Visser, followed by Janine Bode, followed by Erica Smith. Kathy?
Okay. President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to start with-- while I appreciate we're still negotiating the handbook and that we've actually had a chance to work out some differences on the handbook this year, I'm still highly disappointed in the process and how this has been taken and just how dismissive I think this process has been of us as parents. I know you, as a board, understand the volunteer hours that go into making things work. There are parents like myself who have spent thousands of hours, literally every year, to make this program what it is and make it work better, often because the Department of Education has failed to put out appropriate communication to parents or even communicate what they're actually expecting of us. The-- while I'm excited that the hard caps have been taken out of the handbook, I am concerned that we believe they're going to be left in there as, you know, just unspoken. And we will continue to have to advise parents on a social media platform on how to navigate this. The vague wording, to me, is very concerning. It's also concerning to me that if there's a disagreement, we just happily send the parents off to an appeals process, which parents are expecting when they walk in parents off to an appeals process, which parents are expecting when they walk in to be able to present their information and have a conversation about what this is, only to be hit very hard with a very legal process and not feel like they could have possibly been prepared without hiring a lawyer to go with this, hence the, it sounds like 100% win on the ADE side. One of those decisions, I guess, was a $4,000 cap on musical instruments, which I am not, as a professional musician and educator, in agreement with. So I find that very concerning that now, because that's been decided in the appeals process, now it's a hard cap. I thank you for the...
Okay, great. We can't see the clock. Okay. All right, but then Deputy Director Duplanti?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. The time had expired. We heard the beep on that one. Next up is Janine Bode, followed by Erica Smith, followed by Melissa Atwood. Janine?
Good morning, members of the board. I'm here today as a bothered private school parent, seeking clarity regarding the ongoing challenges I've faced trying to get a MacBook approved for my 16-year-old son. I only use his ESA for tuition, but the one time I want to help further his education by helping him get a laptop, I'm running into continuous issues. My son is a highly motivated student who is passionate about coding and technology, and he requires a high-performance computer to continue advancing his skills. Months ago, our initial request was denied. Following the recent town hall where Superintendent Horn stated that the department would respect cases that may require a laptop over $2,000, I called to ask about resubmitting the request. Unfortunately, I ran into the same roadblocks. Both the help desk and purchasing department insist that approval requires a specialist letter tied to a disability. However, my son does not have an OT, SLT, or other specialists who would deal with this type of request. When I asked if his teacher at his private school could provide the required documentation, I was again told it had to be from a specialist, which leaves us at a dead end. This process is unclear and frankly discouraging. Out of frustration, I called the help desk again last week. They transferred me to the purchasing department, who let me know to resubmit the order and write a letter stating why my son needs this technology. We're still waiting to see if the order will be approved or denied. We need clarity and support. Going back and forth has been beyond stressful. I've been in the hospital three times in the past month for an MS flare-up, and I'm now dealing with a grandmother who's passing away in hospice. I don't have the time or mental clarity to continue dealing with this. My son uses professional-grade platforms, which require a powerful machine, particularly one with Apple Silicon, Apple RAM, and fast SSD storage to run efficiently. Our current household computers simply can't handle the workload, often crashing mid-task and derailing his learning and derailing him. This is not about luxury or brand preference. It's about equipping a student. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Erica Smith, followed by Melissa Atwood, followed by Nina Conrad. Erica?
Hi, good morning, members of the board. My name is Erica Smith. I'm from Peoria, Arizona. Our family has been, thankfully, participating in the ESA program since 2017. It has been an incredible blessing for our children and for their educational growth. We currently have three children participating in the program, and I'm really just here to echo all of the comments before me, which is to please vote no on the current drafted handbook. There's very vague language with spending caps that are not considering the child's individualized educational needs. As I mentioned previously, I have three children, all in different levels, high school, middle school, and early elementary. They all have varying needs, varying educational needs. And so putting these spending caps without having the ability to ensure that we're individualizing education is, it really just goes against the child's education, and it puts a limit at what they're able to do because of the access to resources. So I urge you all to please vote no. Parents and students, we all need a handbook with clear language, with clear expectations that is written in the best interest of the student's educational needs. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Melissa Atwood, followed by Grace Blazer. Melissa?
Hi, good morning. I'd like to start off by thanking the board and all of those involved for all the work you have put into writing the new handbook. I appreciate the due diligence that you have spent on this. As I was preparing for the meeting today, I gathered all of the different versions of the proposed ESA Parent Handbook. There are now so many of them that I've lost track of which handbook is which and what changes are in each of one of them. There is one common thing, though, about all of them. If you look at the very first page, two words in the middle of the page are bigger than the rest. Those words are "parent handbook." Please notice that the first word is "parent." It is not Tom Horn, Arizona Department of Education, or ESA vendor. It is "parent." If you continue down the page, the next four words are empowerment, scholarship, account, program. Empowerment: It is the process of gaining freedom and power to control one's life and make decisions, often involving the ability to represent one's interests and achieve personal goals. It can also refer to granting authority or rights to individuals or groups to act on their own behalf. A synonym of empower is delegate. Us ESA parents have been delegated to educate our children based on their needs. On page 22 of the latest proposed Parent Handbook, it states, "The department will approve expenses that are reasonably related to an educational or vocational purpose, based on consideration of the following factors." After that statement, four factors are listed, the last one being, "The cost or quantity of the expense or item is not greater than what meets the student's educational needs, circumstances, and relation to other readily available and reasonable alternatives." In other words, "The Arizona Department of Education will decide what my children's educational needs are. How are they going to do that? Do they even know my children's name? What about how they learn or what their needs are? What are they going to use to determine what my child's needs are?"
Ms. Atwood, thank you so much.
Please do not approve this handbook.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Nina Conrad, followed by Grace Blazer, followed by Lisa Collins. Nina?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having, giving us the opportunity to speak this morning. This is regarding adopting a parent-drafted ESA handbook. I'm here today to urge you to reject the department's June 18th ESA Parent Handbook and instead adopt the legislative, the language from the Legislative Review Handbook that truly reflects Arizona law and serves our students. The changes I'm asking you to make are straightforward. First, eliminate the vague unreasonableness framework that gives the department unchecked discretion to deny legitimate educational expenses. This objective standard will lead to inconsistent enforcement and discriminatory outcomes. Second, remove requirements from medical documentation to justify educational purchases. Forcing families to prove their children's disabilities to bureaucrats violates privacy and creates barriers to access. Parents already know their children's needs best. Third, restore clear, objective criteria for expense approval based on educational purpose, not arbitrary cost limits or subjective market price determinations. Fourth, adopt the language of the Legislative Approved ESA Parent Handbook that was developed with proper legislative input and oversight, ensuring compliance with Arizona statute. I specifically ask you to adopt the Legislative Reviewed Version that maintains necessary safeguards while preserving parental choice and educational freedom that Arizona voters supported. This Legislative Reviewed Version follows the actual statute, not the department's preferred interpretation. This Legislative Reviewed Handbook offers what families need: Clear guidelines that respect parental authority, protect student privacy, ensuring equitable access in regard to disability status.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Grace Blazer, followed by Lisa Collins, followed by Erica Wesley. Grace?
Thank you all for your time today. I would just ask that you guys reject the current handbook, the proposed handbook, until a lot of the things by parents have been either added in or considered more than they have been now. I would also ask that, the, I know that it's been said that this has been something that's been required or asked for a long time as far as medical documentation from a therapist for any special needs equipment. Unfortunately, most individuals will not do that because they, their licensure does not allow them to document on things that are outside of their, the scope of practice and which items that we would be requesting are. Also, us using insurance to go in for a letter of medical necessity is not something that most of them will do because letter of medical necessity is for something that is medical, not something that is used for this purpose. Also, I would ask consideration for ESA debit cards to be reissued. I think this is a huge barrier financially that causes a disadvantage for low-income families that cannot afford things out of pocket that are not listed in class wallet. I think it also creates an unfair advantage for companies and services that are in the marketplace versus those who are not. So I'd ask for consideration on that. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Lisa Collins, followed by Erica Wesley, and then followed by Melissa Gardner. Lisa?
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here today as a parent and a concerned citizen to express my deep concerns regarding the recent changes to the ESA Parent Handbook. While it may appear that removing spending caps offers families more flexibility, the reality is more troubling. The original caps, while sometimes frustrating at least, offered clarity. Now, instead of objective guidelines, we're left with vague interpretive language about reasonableness, customary usage, and case-by-case determinations. Who decides what's reasonable, what is customary, and most importantly, what protects families from inconsistent or subjective rulings? It feels as though the handbook simply removed the numerical limits, but still intends to apply them, only now without transparency. I'm especially concerned by the introduction of risk-based audits. Arizona State Statute 152403 clearly calls for random audits. Risk-based auditing introduces a selective and potentially biased process, raising questions about fairness and accountability. Families need predictability. They need trust, and they deserve a system that follows the law, not one that moves accountability behind closed doors. I urge you to reconsider this language and to ensure the handbook reflects clear, lawful, and consistent standards that protect both public funds and the rights of students. Please vote no on this approved handbook. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. It looks like the next three speakers, Erica Wesley, Melissa Gardner, and Michelle Van Gerp are not online, so next up will be Chris Wolfle. Go ahead, Chris. Chris, are you muted?
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and members of the board. I'm an ESA parent who supports educational freedom of choice for all students. Today, I'm here on behalf of children with disabilities like my son, who depends on the ESA program, to thrive academically and to help launch him into independence as a taxpaying citizen. When the most recent iteration of the Parent Handbook was emailed to parents less than 24 hours before the deadline to comment, I was frustrated and disappointed because vague, subjective language and additional documentation requirements remained. There are no limits on tuition or textbook spending, yet I have no guarantee that there are unwritten limits on the tools vocational students like my son needs for their programs. No guarantee, especially in computer technology. He isn't getting any new money, but he needs to have the freedom and power to spend the funds that he does have on the vocational programs and educational equipment that he needs to complete certificates in order to get meaningful employment. Families are afraid to spend funds because they can't risk not getting reimbursed. Staff are not equipped to evaluate the disability and vocational-related needs accurately. Parents understand the educational needs of their students. Let us be empowered again. Legislators have urged you to pause. Please pause. We share common goals. Let's, let's help our students succeed. We all want to be good stewards of the ESA program. Please pause, and let's be fully transparent as we work together to get this right. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Looks like our next three speakers, Naomi Maxson, Jaclyn Berryhill, and Stephanie Kozneck are not online. So next up is Savannah Rogers, followed by Crystal McKinley. Savannah?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Dear SPE, thank you for hearing us over the last few months. You're hearing today again from parents over the ESA Handbook. The Handbook should help parents navigate this program and be used by the department as well, so it's both a guidebook for those of us who are on the program and those reviewing our purchases. Ultimately, I'm not sure that this handbook accomplishes that task. Overall, I'm disappointed with the department's shenanigans in dragging out this process and using it as a political bargaining chip instead of working in good faith with parents. They've had the feedback for months and chose to do nothing about it for months and only released this draft less than 18 hours from the cutoff to publicly comment and sign up to speak to this board. While there are some improvements that have been made, there's additional language that basically says the department can add or take away from these rules whenever they want, and that violates the administrative rules. The reason we keep the handbook revisions yearly is to help eliminate confusion and give parents stability. I'm concerned that even though the language was removed, imposing caps and cross-year restraints, I'm not convinced that they won't just do what they want and secretly impose the rules on us in the back end. Parents don't stand a chance against a team of lawyers. Most can't afford to have purchases come back on them, much less retain the legal counsel to prove that their purchases were in good faith. Lastly, the issue in the handbook regarding disability contracts were not fixed. We need someone with a special education background at the department. Word said himself that employees are not trained to deal with special needs, and that puts many of us back in similar situations, which led us to leave public schools. Please send this handbook back to the department and have them work in good faith. There is language in clear guidelines that need to be addressed and need to be fixed so that parents can feel safe and know that they're not going to buy something and later the department's going to say, "No, you can't have that. You have to repay," or get an expensive lawyer to fight us. Thank you so much.
Oh, your time's still going. Sorry, my error.
That's okay.
Please go ahead and finish.
I'm finished. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Crystal McKinley, followed by Roberta Patterson, followed by Beth Weber. Crystal?
Can you hear me? I've had computer issues this morning.
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. I'm going to speak as quick as I can on a unrehearsed speech of my personal experience. Everything you're hearing so far this morning is spot-on. Please vote no on this new proposed handbook. My experience is through the appeal process. My appeal did go through. I had to represent myself, spending hours of time away from my children and educating them, playing these games and jumping through these hoops, for the courts to tell me that, yes, my item is an approved item underneath the ESA program. However, they still recommend I be denied. Now, does that make sense? I'm holding in my hand, and I'm sorry, I don't have video, something that ADE could consider excessive under this new handbook, which is boxes of pencils. I have a basic box of $1.25 pencils from the Dollar Store, which is 24, where you have to hand sharpen, like we grew up with. In my other hand, I have a box of mechanical pencils that are BIC that cost me $3 from Walmart. Now, I can go to Office Depot and buy a box of the same quantity of pencils for $35. Now, which one would ADE consider excessive? Are we all to start shopping at the Dollar Store? Because the vague writing in this handbook will give them the authorization to say whatever they want as to what is considered excessive, yet all of them serve the need of writing, every single one. And up to this point, they have all been approved. Now, the liaison of accountability at Hannah McCarthy for ESA said that they have no SOPs, no procedure in determining what is allowable or excessive. It's based off of their Google searches and what that they decide on a personal experience. So please, I ask you to vote no because it's too vague. Thank you for your time.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Looks like Roberta Patterson and Beth Weber are not online, so next up is Kelly Kenny, followed by Leslie Rice, followed by Nancy Hardell. Kelly?
Good morning. Thank you for your time. First, ESA has continued to enforce the draft unapproved handbook since March. Parents are continued to receive denials on the unapproved draft for their purchases, which now has a new version as of last week's submission. I am asking the State Board of Education, again, to stop these unlawful actions. Every person has a different perspective in reasonableness. I am asking the SPE to demand ESA to abolish the reasonableness factor for purchases. I am a first-generation Cuban-American, raised by a Cuban refugee who came here I am a first-generation Cuban-American, raised by a Cuban refugee who came here with nothing. Growing up, my family's view of reasonableness vastly differed from others. The state already defined how much a child can use for education. That is the amount in our class wallet account. To impose personal opinion subjectively to each approval would ultimately lead to discrimination. Superintendent Horn stated multiple times in the town hall that ESA will be the judge on reasonableness. One person's personal opinion and subjectivity would lead to discrimination of approvals. I'm requesting this to be removed from the handbook. ESA has communicated to families they are no longer allowing required items like swim goggles, fins, and snorkels. This is one example of ESA denying mandatory items. Goggles for swimming is no different than a student needing a calculator for math class. I am asking today for you to prohibit ESA from denying what students need to learn for their subject. I'm asking for the ESA to return to what this program was meant to be, allowing parents the freedom to choose how, when, where to educate their children, how the parents see fit, with the money the state already defined by child. Thank you very much for my time.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Looks like Leslie Rice is not online. So Nancy Hardle, you're up.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you. I certainly have learned a lot in this session today. I'm going to start off a little differently because there are a lot of different opinions, and I really learned a lot from it. But I don't have any specific recommendations for this handbook, but I do have great concern with the ESA program. I feel like it's been added to a huge state deficit, and it's involved blatant prior misuse. And these include, but are not limited to $360 million in 2024 of unaccounted voucher funds, verified inappropriate use for things like luxury kitchen items and ski resort passes, and even some board members being charged criminally for suspicion of stealing $600,000, I believe, from the funds. In summary, all I want to say is that we need to find a way to, I'm hoping someday, to completely replace this program with something better because I think the ESA program right now is an attempt to destroy our public schools. But in the meantime, I think stringent handbook guidelines that call for accountability, transparency, and scrutiny of financial management of taxpayer-funded money is critical. I fully support our public school system and financial help for special need kids like my autistic grandson and those struggling financially. I absolutely do not support any tax funding for any type of religious schools, especially those ascribing to white Christian nationalist cult. Thank you very much for your time.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. That concludes this call to the public.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. May I suggest we take a 10-minute break?
Can we take a 10-minute break? We'll be back at the, what time is it? The top of the hour? Oh, no, it's 10:40.
10:45.
Sorry, I can't see the glare. Sorry. Okay, so I think we're, yeah, we have a quorum, I think. And so before we get our general session, item five on the agenda, I believe our Assistant Attorney General Cal is going to have a comment. Is that right?
President Haley, Vice President, Superintendent, members of the board. So during the prior public comment, there was a letter from legislators that was referenced. At the board's discretion, the board may consider the letter a written public comment to be entered as part of the public comments of record for the last agenda item or for the group of agenda items for which this public comment session was discussed. So if the board would like to add this as a untimely public comment submission so that the board can review the comment in making its decision on the ESA handbook, the board may choose to do so. And we do have copies of the letters printed out.
Great. Thank you so much. If we do so, do we need to make a motion? Or do we just receive the public comment?
I would say just make a motion to receive the public comment into the current meeting record.
Great. Do I have a motion? Superintendent Horn?
There's also a letter from two senators that were distributed to board members. Those that are here are hard copy and those that are watching, who are attending remotely have been emailed it. So maybe that could be included as well.
Yeah, if Superintendent, if you'd like to include that in the motion, that's fine. And the letter that I'm referencing here was signed by multiple legislators. Legislators, it looks like about
12.
12, 14, 14.
12.
Yeah.
I counted them. It's 12.
Okay. First, I have 14. Yeah, that's okay.
So the board then would make a motion to accept these documents into written comment?
Yeah.
Great.
Can I answer?
Vice President Hagerman?
So just to clarify, is there any other letters we've received from anyone else? I just want to make sure that if we do this, we acknowledge I just want to make sure that if we do this, we acknowledge everyone's feedback.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Vice President Hagerman. We have the the written comment that has been received, as always, is entered into the agenda by staff. This obviously came in this morning and so was not entered in, but the board may allow it.
Perfect, I'm totally, I'm supportive of that. I just wanted to make sure we include it all, thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion? Dr. Hightower, do you have a question?
Thank you so much, President Haley. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I know our legislative body is someone that we definitely look up to, but I am concerned that at this moment and at this point in the meeting that we're setting a precedent for future meetings to accept public participation at this point and at this time. So I'm very conflicted because of course it is our legislative body and senators, but would this board open up public participation or additional public participation or comments by anyone at any meeting?
Thank you so
To make sure to share that that sentiment, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hightower. That's a very fair question. We have accepted comments from the public at the board's discretion in the past, but I do appreciate your comments that you have raised, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments that they would like to raise?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have one.
Uh, Dr. Clay.
Yes, I, I am looking for a copy of it and I don't see if you said this was a copy that was, um.
Hasn't been sent yet.
This, Dr. Clay, this letter that was sent by twelve or fourteen legislators this morning has not received, been received to us, but we're just trying to decide right now if we're going to enter to, enter it into the record.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. If the board does vote to do so, staff is ready to email it to members who are virtual immediately.
Okay, great, and Dr. Core.
Well, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready to entertain one. I don't want to jump the line.
Did, do you have a question, Member Myerson?
Eventually aligned, but I was just gonna actually try and understand better the precedent of accepting public comment in the midst of of a board meeting. If you could, somebody could just explain that to me and like how we've handled that in the past.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, Member Myerson. It is, it is historically not been the practice of the board to accept public comment in the midst of a meeting. There are occasions where a speaker will come with materials that they did not bring to us before and, you know, we've been able to disseminate them. So it is really at the discretion of the board, but it is not something, to my knowledge, that has happened before, or at least in my tenure, I should say. And then AAG Kato was gonna speak a little more. The board's decision to accept public comment is within the board's discretion. There's no, there's no independent right for public comment. It's something that any public body may decide to allow. And as part of deciding whether to allow public comment in the first instance, the public body may also set time, place and manner restrictions on it. So it does have discretion here and whatever requirements it imposes, if it finds good cause or some other good faith reasonable basis to to do so, it it may waive them.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to accept the letter from the two legislators that were provided to us earlier this morning, as well as the letter from, I think it was either twelve or fourteen legislators providing their comment on the ESA handbook. Hopefully that was generally, I covered my bases. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favors?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, due to the unusual nature of this vote, we should do a roll call vote.
Great, so we will do a roll call.
President Haley?
Aye.
Vice President, Vice President Hagerman?
Aye.
Superintendent Horn? Uh, Dr. Clay?
Um, aye, but may I explain my vote?
Of course.
Due to, well, I, I believe that we need to get as much information as possible, a three hundred and sixty degree view on everybody and be purposeful about it. Even though this is not something that we normally do, this is something that, it is different. So I think the board needing to see everybody's perspective is very important. That's all I have.
Dr. Core?
Yes.
Dr. Cruz Rivera?
Yes.
Dr. Hightower?
If I can, if I can explain my vote prior to voting, I would really like the reasonable time to review the letters. So I don't know if there's any way to have that opportunity to to read the letters in detail and to really consider them before voting on that. Given the the fact that we're just hearing about the letters this morning. So with that, I vote no.
My apologies, so that was no from Dr. Hightower. Member Myerson?
Yes.
Dr. Webke?
Yes, but I really have a hard time accepting testimony at this late without, especially the group that it's coming from. Not that they shouldn't be considered, but I'm imagining, I haven't seen the letter, that there's quite a bit of detail in that and I'm just wanting to make a really good decision based on all the information and I'm hoping that maybe we could have some time to read that letter and process it. I have no idea, you know, it could be a couple paragraphs and very easy to understand if it's any lengthy. I just think we should have some extra time, but with that, I'll vote yes for this one instance.
President Haley, the motion passes.
Okay. With that, I think we need to move to item five, uh, five A and where we'll be having a presentation and discussion of the Million Dollar Teacher Project. Following that, we will consider the ESA handbook for item five B. When we get to that, we can discuss the nature of issues before us. So with that, Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. With us today is Lloyd Hopkins from the Million Dollar Teacher Project to discuss that project, which is a focus on teacher celebration and retention. And it's his work with that group across the valley. Lloyd?
Here?
There you go.
Am I on? Can you hear me? Hear you, hear me? We awake? Executive Director Ross, Mr. DePlante, thank you for coordinating your efforts today to help me, to allow me to be here today. President Haley and board members, thank you for allowing me some time to speak and present to you on the work of Million Dollar Teacher Project. I am especially moved to be able to present on a day like today where I've been able to listen to a lot of people advocating for, for, for students, you know, from parents to administrators to teachers and other individuals. The work of Million Dollar Teacher Project aligns with that because our, because we advocate for students by ensuring that they have a quality, motivated educator in the classroom every single day. You know, we support students by supporting teachers. And I've been doing that work with this organization since we launched in 2016. Million Dollar Teacher Project is a teacher retention and recruitment organization that I launched to partner with Title I schools and marginalized communities to help them increase how their teachers are recognized, supported and compensated. I personally have worked in and around education for over twenty years in different capacities. I worked with youth offenders, after school recreation, dropout prevention. By the time that was the most meaningful in my own personal journey was roughly six years I spent in the classroom as a teaching assistant. The reason why I say that time was so impactful is that, one, it showed me I'm not cut out to teach. I need to leave that for other brilliant individuals that can do that great work every day because being a good teacher is a skill. You know, it's not something that just anybody can do and it's important that we honor the profession that way. The second reason that my time in the classroom was so impactful is that it exposed me to the plight of teachers firsthand, how they're often overworked, underpaid, undervalued, underappreciated, and that's a community issue. You know, if we really want to ensure every student has access to an equitable education, a quality education, that starts and begins by having a quality educator in the classroom. And once I realized that and I saw that there weren't enough organizations, in my opinion, focusing specifically on the teacher and making teachers feel like a million dollars every single day, I launched this organization in 2016 and haven't looked back since. You know, this is my life's work, my life's work. Next slide, please. Oh, am I doing the slides? There's a clicker? Oh, fantastic. Okay, that works. All right, so I have a, a small but mighty team. We're largely based in Maricopa County. Our goal is to be statewide, at some point national. But I have a, a team of dedicated full-time individuals that are helping us with the implementation of our program model. As I mentioned, our work revolves around teacher retention and recruitment. Why teacher retention on schools matters is that we currently have a severe shortage of educators. There's nearly six thousand Arizona classrooms that lack a permanent or certified teacher in the classroom and that's the data that we saw in 2024. Burnout crisis, sixty-nine percent of Arizona teachers considered leaving last year due to low pay, stress and poor support. Student success suffers when teacher return, teacher retention is low. Frequent turnover is linked to lower test scores, weaker achievement and instability, especially in high need schools. And lastly, there's a high cost of turnover. Each departure costs up to twenty thousand dollars in recruiting, training and lost productivity, which equals millions of dollars lost statewide from our current problem. Retention equals results. Keeping great teachers improves outcomes, saves money and strengthens communities. Today, teachers are leaving the profession at an alarming rate. We want to, we, our work revolves around making teaching the destination instead, instead of an afterthought. Teachers cite lack of support as their top reason for resigning and teacher salaries are significantly lower than other professions. I know some of this is preaching to the choir. You guys do this every day, but I'm saying it for the people in the back that may not have heard me clearly. So our model revolves around a three pillar system. Those three pillars are recognition, support and compensation. As I mentioned earlier, when we partner with a Title I school in a marginalized community, which is our focus, because we're looking to level the playing field, we partner with those schools around increasing how their teachers are recognized, driving more support directly into their classrooms and creating innovative ways to impact how teachers are compensated. There, our delivery system on how we do that looks like this. So under rec, under our recognition pillar, we have three initiatives. One is take a teacher to lunch, where we partner with businesses and rest, and the restaurant community to bring full catered lunch celebrations directly on a school campus to celebrate teachers over lunch. We also do one in a million, which is a monthly teacher spotlight where individuals from the community and from schools can nominate great teachers. We pick one of those teachers and they get a green carpet gift display in front of the whole campus. We do that for two reasons. One, to make sure that those teachers feel valued. But two, we want students to see their teachers being recognized, elevated, celebrated in that manner because we want the teaching profession to become aspirational. Three, we have, we have an event called Feel Like a Million Dollars that we do during our annual fundraiser that we do every summer, where all of our teachers we recognize through the year go into a Feel Like a Million Dollars competition. People vote on which teacher deserves to feel like a million dollars and that teacher gets a prize package full of goodies and cash prizes at the end of the year for being our Feel Like a Million Dollars teacher. We also, under compensation, we have two key initiatives. One is our Teachers We Trust Endowment Fund, which is an endowment we launched two years ago to, to offer grants to teachers, to offer scholarships to teachers looking to further their education, offer basic needs assistance to students identified by teachers and offer financial incentives to teachers that are demonstrating excellence in different ways. We also have our Teacher Appreciation Package, which is essentially a discount program that we implement in partnership with businesses across Maricopa County, where we engage those businesses to offer a meaningful discount to teachers at least twice a year, if not year round. So teachers can come in, show their ID and get a discount on goods and services. Lastly, under our support pillar, we have two programs, Classroom Support Team and the Million Dollar Teacher Tree. Through Classroom Support Team, we work with universities, community colleges and volunteer organizations to bring in teams of interns and volunteers to work directly on a school campus in support of a grade level of teachers. This team, each individual on this team that consists of four individuals commits to ten hours a week, every week from September to March. On average, we give teachers around fifteen hundred hours of their time back from the additional support we bring in through this program. These teachers are helping, these students are helping teachers with lesson planning, curriculum development, working with students one-on-one and in groups and basically being there to assist teachers in as many ways as possible. We also do the Teacher Tree, which is an annual classroom supply drive that we do in partnership with Staples. Teachers submit wish lists to us, we put them out in the community. You come by Staples, pick an apple, get the donation, get it to us, we get it to classrooms. This was a teacher testimonial. Mr. Ross told me that you guys can't play videos in here, but this is a great video. I would suggest you watch it. It's from one of our third grade teachers that we supported through our classroom support team who really cited, she was on the verge of burnout when we partnered with her and she, and she really cited Million Dollar Teacher Project keeping her in the profession. You know, she said the time, the three years that we worked with her were her most joyous in the classroom, out of the fifteen years that she had already been in the classroom, you know? So we are helping to keep teachers in the profession longer. We have, our model is delivered through a campus saturation approach. What we do is we create focus schools. We have two focus schools, Wilson Elementary and Madrid Neighborhood School. What we do with these schools is we saturate them with our programming for three to five years. The first three years, we do the heavy lift of program implementation. Year four to five, we help the school build the capacity to run our programs on our own. Then we move on to another school and repeat the process. Our goal is to build a community of schools that operate under the Million Dollar Teacher Project philosophy and umbrella. This is just our, a snapshot of our impact. Through Take a Teacher to Lunch, we've impacted over thirty-five hundred teachers. That's a lot of recognition across the valley. Through the Teacher Tree, we've brought in over forty thousand dollars in classroom supplies and through our Classroom Support Team program, we've brought in nearly thirteen hundred, we've given teachers nearly thirteen thousand hours of their time back from the additional support we bring into the classroom. Our annual impact is we're serving nearly thirty thousand students every year through the work we do with teachers. We're impacting around ten thousand families and nearly eighteen thousand teachers through the additional support we're bringing in onto school campuses. Our impact on teacher retention, so this is a snapshot of, of, of Madrid Neighborhood School, which is one of our focus schools. They're, we're, they're at about a ninety-five percent retention rate year off, year after year since we've come into their campus and started partnering with them. MDTP recognition impact strongly correlates with overall appreciation and retention impact, emphasizing the role of recognition and teacher satisfaction and retention. Teacher recognition directly influences teacher retention. MDTP programming effectively enhances teacher appreciation. So we have a lot of data that supports that. Overall, I know I got, I got about five more minutes, but overall, what we're looking to do is create an equitable education system. You know, we want regardless of socioeconomic background where students live at, they have access to a quality teacher. You know, that's what we want to see happen. We want to boost student achievement. As I said earlier, we support students by supporting their educator. And there is direct data that, that shows that relationship between teacher retention, quality educators and student performance. We want to empower communities. Every aspect of our program is community driven. We don't just come in and prescribe solutions. We involve the stakeholders in the community in delivering those solutions. We want the community to feel empowered to take ownership of their school performance and how their stu, and how their teachers are treated and the environment that their students learn in. And lastly, we want to elevate teaching. We want the phrase, I want to teach, to become a popular phrase and not be one of those things that when a kid comes in and says, I want that when a kid comes in and says, I want to teach, their parents are talking them out of it. Tell them, you're not gonna make money doing that. You're crazy. Why do you want to go into the classroom? You know, the teaching profession should be revered and every single teacher should feel like a million dollars. And so I hope that this conversation and this presentation today is a, a opener for us to figure out how we might be able to work together and partner around doing that. Thank you for having me.
Well, that was fantastic. Thank you so much, uh, for your presentation, uh, Mr. Hopkins. Uh, I think members of the board likely have questions and so I'd love to open this up for questions. Let's start with Dr. Webke.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. I met you in my.
Thank you for all you do.
I met you in my former life and I'm glad to see that this program continues. I decided to become a teacher because I had great teachers. And I think teachers can just change the world. I would, uh, love to, first of all, the pillars that you have, I think are pertinent and important. But I also know that for every child in Arizona, every child in Arizona deserves a great school.
Yep.
And for great schools to exist, we need great educators behind them, which means great teachers and great leaders. And so one area that I would love to see, and the state used to do something similar to this and because of financial constraints, but we really need pathways for leadership for teachers as well. So I would like to see somewhere that there's a fourth pillar where we have not only the support, the recognition and the compensation, but pathways for leadership so that we can grow the next generation of school leaders and principals. And I think a lot of teachers are like me, all they ever wanted to do was to be a teacher. And, um, just a series of events happened and I realized that maybe I too could be a principal. And that took a long time for that to happen, but I was afforded great opportunities along the way. And I would love to see how this state board can help move this agenda because at the bottom line, everything that we do is about the kids in the classroom and the teachers and the educators that support them. So, um, I just want to applaud the work that you do and your commitment. You know, lesser men would have given up a long time ago. And, uh, you continue to preach this message and I so appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I agree with your sentiments around leadership. One of our core tenets is teachers should be viewed as community leaders, you know? And making sure that they have the resources and the support to be able to do that is one of our core values. So I would love to be able to work with you on creating that as a pillar.
Dr. Clay, I see you have your hand up.
Good afternoon. Is it, no, still good morning. Good morning and, um, thank you for that, um, wonderful presentation. It's really great when, um, I hear presentations that are definitely in line with the strategies that we are currently, um, putting in, um, in force. I, my question to you is, have you considered collaborating with county superintendents? And I know, I see that you're looking at individual schools, but county superintendents have a, a wider perspective on what's going on? And they have also a wider reach in getting some program like this started, especially in schools that are rural.
We, we have considered that and we are building those relationships. So we have, um, a, a casual relationship with Steve Watson, the Maricopa County Superintendent. We also have a developing relationship with Steve King, who's, uh, the superintendent out in Yavapai County. So that is a, a, a part of our growth strategy is how do we strengthen those relationships? So we would welcome, um, any, any support or guidance or collaboration in how we can strengthen those relationships to turn it into implementation.
Great. Well, um, I would like to have a meeting with you. I'm the county superintendent for Cochise County. And just, um, let you know, um, Steve Watson is not the Maricopa Superintendent anymore. That would be Shelley Boggs, um, just in case you might want to go ahead and note that. Um, and the next thing is, um, we have our, we're working on a Grow Your Own Teacher Program in Cochise County and not only Cochise County, um, all the county superintendents, we're looking at doing something like that. So I think that you would be a great asset to our strategies and our vision and what we're trying to do, um, in the future. I know with us, we're getting T-shirts where business people are saying, be a teacher. And we're getting billboards, um, putting on a highway saying, be a teacher. So I, I believe that working with you and with School Connect and other organizations that truly believe in this with all their hearts, that it's their passion, we will be able to move forward and getting some good teachers, validating them and helping our students be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clay. I would love to be a part of that work and thank you on the correction on the superintendent as well.
Um, I see that, Dr. Hightower, you had your hand raised.
Hey, Dr. Hightower.
Hi, Mr. Hopkins. Thank you so much for such a wonderful presentation. It, it is directly aligned to one of the priorities of the state board of education. And I'm just so grateful for the work that you and your mighty team are leading. And I can't wait, uh, for us, uh, to collaborate, work together. It really will take every single person, um, to ensure that our teachers are retained and, um, also recruited. So thank you again for your work.
Thank you.
Great. Do we have any other questions? Superintendent Horn.
Yes, I wanted to compliment you for what you're doing. Every year I give a report to the legislature in the form of a state of education speech. And I pointed out to them, we're losing more teachers from the classroom that are coming into the profession. So if some strong action isn't taken, um, uh, we could end up with zero teachers. You can imagine how the public would react to that. And, you know, and I, what I've told them many times is we've got to raise teacher salaries. That's really necessary, but I also praise you for what you're doing. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I just had a few questions you mentioned earlier and I'll take a president prerogative. You mentioned two priorities, specifically, um, I believe the Madrid, uh, Community School and, um, one other school, Wilson. Given the numbers of teachers and families you've impacted, I assume you've worked with other schools? Is that correct?
Absolutely. So we're going on 10 years, um, in operation. And so we have incremental programs that we do across the state. Those are just our two focus schools. So we partner with a number of schools on Take a Teacher to Lunch, where we bring full catered lunch celebrations. We involve teachers across the state in our one in a million program. And we also, uh, work with, and, and we also impact a lot of teachers through what we're doing through TAP, which is our business discount program. That's also how we reach a lot of teachers throughout the state as well.
That's great. For, um, the engaging of the teachers that you deem like highly qualified, effective, changing kids' lives, are those based on recommendations from your partner schools? Or who recommends those educators that deserve the spotlight?
Yeah, so it's, it's largely through, uh, community nominations, principal nominations. We vet the applications, we talk with principals. Anytime we get like, we'll have parents and students that also recommend teachers. And so when we get those recommendations in, we have, we sit down with the principal to really match up what's being, um, how, why the teacher's being nominated to ensure they are highly effective. And, um, and after we go through that kind of screening and vetting process, then the teacher will get their recognition.
Just the process by vetting, do you have like a standard protocol? Like, you know, the teacher is serving X number of kids and you look at data that kids have moved from point A to point B or stronger school culture? What are the components that make those high quality educators?
We, we look at class size, even though that's not the end all be all because you can have a highly effective teacher that's in a small class. You know, we also look at, um, cultural impact on the school campus, how they're engaging parents, how they're engaging students. And we also always look at student achievement. So test scores, um, 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 how their students are performing in math, reading, writing, you know, things of that nature. So those all, all of those things go into the, kind of into the pot when we're evaluating a teacher we recognize.
That's great. Are most of the schools that you partner with elementary schools? Or do you also include middle and high school?
Yeah, so right now we're largely a K eight model. We are looking to expand to high school, but most of the schools we serve at this point are, are in that K eight spectrum.
That's great. And then just another question on like compensating impactful teachers. In the, in Teachers We Trust Endowment Fund, is that just funds that you raise that you give to those impactful teachers?
Yep, yep, yep. So we launched, again, we launched that two years ago. We do an annual fundraiser every single year. And then the funds that we raise are redistributed to assist teachers in those different ways. You know, whether scholarships, it goes into teacher incentives. So a part of our record, um, how we recognize teachers, especially our feel like a million dollar teachers, they get a cash prize for winning that. And then also basic needs assistance to students that are identified by teachers. But we do a fundraiser every year to raise dollars in support of that.
That's great. And then my last question, sorry, of all the questions. Given your slide number 12, it's an impact on teacher retention. You gave the example of Madrid Community School that, um, I think retention increased between the 23, 24 school year to the 24, 25. When you have looked at your educators over the course of your 10 years of existence, have you found pretty high retention rates when individuals have been recognized and, um, and sort of recognized and valued for their education?
That's, that's, that's one of the strongest data points that we have is that when teachers feel valued even more so than compensation because compensation is absolutely key and paramount in teacher retention. But it's also culture, it's also environment, and it's also people feeling seen and valued for the hard work they do every single day. So we see a strong relationship between individuals feeling appreciated, not only from the community, but from their administrators, feeling valued by their students, equalling longer retention and them staying in the profession.
That's great. Anybody else have questions? Okay, well, thank you so much. We really appreciate your time. And I'm sure, uh, member Katniss was disappointed he couldn't be here with us. He's our educator representative and I think was interested in learning more about this program.
He, he helped me get here as well, so.
Okay.
He and I have talked.
Well, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. The next item up is the ESA handbook. Given the previous vote to allow in some new material, the, the board has the option to take a small break if they would like in order to review the materials, not discuss in any way. A discussion would only happen on the dais, but, uh, to review the materials. So if that's something the board were interested in.
And we, we.
Superintendent Horn.
Other letters from the state senators as well. And they, they've been given in hard copy here and, uh, emailed to those attending remotely. And I'd ask that they please, uh, take the time to read that one as well.
Okay, great. So let's take a 15 minute break. We'll reconvene at, I think it's like 11:40 ish, 35 ish. Dr. Clay.
Is it, could you, um, resend anything I, I, that, um, Superintendent Horn, um, was talking about? I remember reading some emails sent. Could you just resend those so they'll be at the top of our emails?
Uh, Dr. Clay, Superintendent Horn, President Haley, Dr. Clay, uh, we're resending all of that right now. So it's a topic of your email inbox.
Great. So we'll be back at 11:40 Arizona time. Okay. I believe we have, uh, we have a, everyone here in person and I suspect we have our Dr. Clay, Dr. Hightower, I think. Dr. Cruz Rivera leaves momentarily.
Dr. Cruz Rivera did need to step away.
We'll greet him when he comes back if he is able to. I know he has a time constraint. So, okay. Well, moving on to item 5B, um, this is a presentation discussion, possible action to approve the empowerment scholarship handbook for school year 2025 pursuant to ARS 38 dash 431 point 03A3. And with that, Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Uh, with us today to present on the draft ESA handbook for FY26 is John Ward, the Executive Director of ESA for the Arizona Department of Education.
President Haley, Vice President Hagerman, Superintendent Horn, members of the committee. I'm here to present the 2025, 2026 ESA parent handbook on behalf of the Department of Ed. So I'd like to begin by just reminding the board of the department's authorization to develop and submit a handbook to this body for consideration. So Arizona revised statute 152403, section K says that the department shall develop an applicant and participant handbook that includes information relating to policies and processes of Arizona empowerment scholarship accounts. Echoing that, Arizona administrative code R7 dash 2 dash 1503, section 1 says that the department shall honor before March 1 of each year, provide the board with a handbook developed in consultation with parents of children on the ESA program. So I remind the board of both state law and administrative code to just emphasize that the Department of Ed is the only agency authorized to submit a handbook. I know there has been this question of a alternative handbook that is out there. That handbook has no authorization in either state law or administrative code. And being compliant with state law seems to be a very strong theme in comments today. And I just want to reiterate that it is the department that, that is responsible for this. And in that vein and in that spirit, back in October, the department put together a committee of 10 ESA parents to help review and revise and develop the current handbook. And so it was a parent developed handbook that had a cross-section, the, the 10, uh, parents who were on this committee, they reflected a very broad cross-section of the ESA community so that we ensured that every single type of voice who utilizes this incredible program had a place at the table. And they did really excellent work, um, over October, November, and December. We have since made modifications to that as we have continued to negotiate this, but we had a really great starting point. As you all know, the, um, as we proposed a draft handbook, really the flashpoint came down to caps that we placed on seven items in the handbook, seven supplement, well, seven supplementary materials or six supplementary materials, as well as computers and laptops. Um, and really it came down to a segment of ESA parents and a segment of state legislators who felt very strongly that there should be no hard caps in the handbook. And the reason why the department did that was because, as you all will recall, leading up to the very first hearing on the handbook, parents were often saying that there was this secret list that, that was out there that we were enforcing. And so to ensure that there was greater transparency, we started to place reasonable limits on some of the expenses that tend to have a higher risk for abuse. Um, obviously that did not go over well with a, with this segment of ESA parents and some of these legislators. And really their claim was that we had no authority to, um, set spending limits. So I, I just want to respond on behalf of the department. Uh, I would like to make three points to address that criticism and that concern. First, when we look at title 15, chapter 19, there are four statutes, 152402, 152403, 2405, and 2406, that all in some form or fashion give the Arizona Department of Education the responsibility, the authority and the authorization to administer this program. Secondly, we have, like any other public agency, a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that a nearly billion dollar program is managed and administered in a responsible way. So for example, watches are an allowable expense in the ESA program. Luxury watches that cost thousands of dollars are not going to be approved by this department. That's part of our fiduciary responsibility. Instruments are an allowable expense in this program. A $16,000 cello was excessive in light of the specific educational needs of the student and his parents who submitted that. And so we did not, um, approve it. That's part of our fiduciary responsibility to the program and to taxpayers. And lastly, I'd like to point out that 10 denials that we have made have worked their way completely through the appeals process. In each of those 10 cases, the Department of Ed has won each case. And I'd like to actually just highlight the most recent decision that we got from an administrative law judge. It says, parent failed to establish that the limitation set by the department was not reasonable and that her children required $4,000 bicycles to meet the specific educational needs of her children, especially when there were less expensive alternatives. I think this opinion is incredibly important because number one, it makes very clear that the ALJ believes that and agrees that the department has the ability to set limits on spending and that it is on the parent to show that the limits that we have set are unreasonable, especially in light of other alternatives that are out there. So for these three kind of overarching reasons, the department feels very confident that we, um, are in a good place to continue to operate this program in a prudent and responsible way that will preserve it moving forward. With regard, um, to the most recent handbook that we have put forward, I'd like to say that the department, policymakers, ESA parents, we've all worked really hard to improve agreement on this handbook. Are we all in a hundred percent agreement on it? No. Um, but we are certainly a lot closer than we were a couple of months ago. Um, so, you know, as we came here, we listened to parent provided comment, uh, over a course of many meetings. The department was, uh, very open to those comments and to those criticisms. We also, um, met with members of the legislature to hear their concerns and try to get closer to resolution and agreement. In fact, we did that five times between the department, the legislature, and members of the ESA parent handbook committee. Two times we also recently, we met with some of our most vocal critics on this handbook. And those, like as Superintendent Horn mentioned earlier, those were really, really productive meetings. So when you get reasonable people to sit across the table from each other, you can have a really great conversation. And that's what we had. And we also hosted a virtual town hall on June 10th for an hour and a half and, you know, in which we were again able to hear some of the criticisms and concerns, um, that parents had with regard to the handbook, as well as just some of the great success stories that some of these parents are having with our program. So again, a lot of time and effort has gotten, gone into this handbook to ensure that there has been good stakeholder engagement. So as part of all of these negotiations and agreements and concessions, I'd like to just take a few minutes to talk about the things that have changed in the current handbook. So the most notorious issue that was causing us grief were these, uh, limits on supplemental materials and computers. So I have snipped each of these bullet points directly from the handbook. And as you will see, there are no hard spending caps on any of these items. So those have been removed. In place of them, we have, and again, this was the result of many meetings and a lot of negotiation, we have replaced those hard limits with a framework, um, by which the Department of Ed will, and its staff will evaluate expenses as they come in. And so I know Superintendent Horn in his opening comments talked about these four factors that we will take into consideration. But really this provides a very, very thoughtful framework by which we can evaluate things that come in. And, and as you see in that paragraph right underneath the last bullet, it says, the department may request additional information and/or documentation on a case by case basis to determine whether an expense is allowable. So without hard caps, if an expense comes in that on the surface So without hard caps, if an expense comes in that on the surface may seem unreasonable or excessive, parents have the ability to submit curriculum, therapist letters, or any other type of support that would allow the ESA staff to evaluate whether that particular item, which again may seem excessive with regard to cost or quantity, is in fact required or good for that particular student's educational needs. Again, this is not arbitrary, as I think some have made it out to be. The ESA staff is relying on parent-prepared curriculum, therapist letters, other forms of documentation to make the case for why something is necessary. That's not arbitrary, that's just us asking for solid support so that a reasonable person could say, "Yeah, I agree. A case has been made that this particular student needs this item." And so again, this framework here really is the product of a lot of work on behalf of a variety of stakeholders. One of the other changes that we made, because we listened to ESA parents, we are now allowing certified special education teachers to provide a letter indicating the need for an associated good or assistive technology. So previously, if there was a student with a disability and they needed a particular type of item that was associated with their disability, we expected a licensed professional or a qualified examiner to provide us some type of documentation just explaining that this particular child needs that item. So to that group, we have added special education teachers. That was something that parents requested. We considered it, and Superintendent Horn considered that to be a reasonable type of person to add to this group who can approve these. So in closing, I'd like to say this handbook reflects a lot of engagement and compromise for many months. One of the criticisms was that we released this handbook so late before public comment closed. Again, that was in no way intentional. We were still negotiating up until the morning that we released the handbook. So this was not some arbitrary way of us just kind of dragging our feet to make it difficult for anyone to review this handbook. We were still trying to work out some differences right up until the end. But this handbook is a more user-friendly handbook. It presents information more clearly, it's better organized, there's so much less redundancy in it. We have hyperlinked statutes and rules which make it more user-friendly for ESA parents. And potentially more importantly, there is a new chapter on how to enroll in the ESA program. And one of the things that has caused so much confusion in this whole debate is which type of supplemental materials require a curriculum and do they require a curriculum? The handbook draft that you all have clarifies that. There is current litigation on whether all supplementary material requires curriculum or not, and so we present both scenarios in the handbook. If the current lawsuit that was put out there by the Goldwater Institute, if it fails, then all supplementary material will require curriculum. If the Goldwater Institute wins its case, then supplemental materials that are so common in the education space, and no one really questions that they're educational, would not require curriculum. And that's the support that the department has given to Goldwater, because we agree for things that are so common in the educational process, why burden parents by asking for more documentation? So for these reasons, I urge this board and encourage it on behalf of the department to adopt this handbook. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Great. Just quick context, I would love for board members to ask questions, and as we wrap up, we can discuss process, et cetera. So with that, Superintendent Horn.
Yes, very briefly, is it true that the legislature has 90 legislators?
Yes.
And is it your understanding that the letter we're talking about comes from 12?
12 or 14.
14, I'm sorry. I stand corrected, 14. And there are two substantive paragraphs in there. One of them says, "The department has already been sued over the arbitrary policy that requires justification of every purchase of supplemental materials with a curriculum nexus." Now, is it true that we have taken the side of the Goldwater Institute against the Attorney General who made this requirement against our protest?
Yes, that is correct. The Department of Education is on board with the Goldwater's case and supports its position.
So to suggest that we're the ones that are being criticized for making this requirement, that would be misleading, because we've taken the side of the Goldwater Institute in the lawsuit, is that right?
Yes.
And then the other substantive paragraph says, "Policies canon will be added and redacted in response to newly enacted legislation, court decisions, rule changes, and/or suggestions for best practices." Could you explain that, please?
I did see that, Superintendent Horn, in the letter from the legislators. That language has been in the handbook for quite some time. To my knowledge, while you've been superintendent, we have not made any changes to the handbook that have not come before this board or body.
Thank you.
Just a clarifying question, is the language in the handbook for that, just the substantive changes every three years, that has been the practice of the board, that you'll make substantive changes every three years, but was that language included in the instance that the legislature passes new policy and the board responds it with new regulations that you then need to update the handbook?
That is correct. So if next year that were to happen, then we would be back here to incorporate those changes from the legislature?
Thanks. Do other, I have some questions, but do other board members have questions about, for Mr. Ward? Dr. Clay?
Thank you, President Haley. My question, first of all, thank you for all the work that you've done and this presentation that really clarifies a lot. Looking at the two letters, I was looking at two letters during the break. One opposes from the legislators, and one supports from the legislators. Okay? So I'm looking at these two. I'm listening to everyone's, but so my only question right now is that in the letter that opposed, they said that, it said that we were, or the law, you probably was breaking the law in some sort of way. Let me see what this says. Unlawful, opposed, they were opposed because they stated that what was written was unlawful. That's what kind of caught my eye. So why, can you give me an objective answer on why they would put that in this letter, that this handbook is unlawful?
President Haley, Dr. Clay, I found that part interesting because the framework that is included in this handbook was developed with many of those same individuals who signed that letter at the table. And so it does just, it is surprising to me that there is now this criticism when this is the very language that we negotiated with that group.
So this language, you got with this group of the letter that opposed, that said it was unlawful, and now all of a sudden, what you're telling me is now they're changing what they were saying. First, they agreed, and now they disagree. Is that correct?
President Haley, Dr. Clay, so all 14 of the signers of that letter were not involved in these meetings, but five of them were. And it was our understanding, they were kind of the key legislators who were going to negotiate with us on behalf of some of their other members.
Okay. So can we get a definitive answer on why they would say it was unlawful? Again, that's the only thing that is my concern. Why would they say that? Because again, you got one side that says yes, that are legislators, and one side that says no. All right? Except that one side that opposes says, "This is unlawful." So that is basically my only concern. Why is it unlawful? Why would they say that? Is there something that we're missing? Is there something that they don't understand? And I'm doing this so that we, you know, we're doing our due diligence by listening to both sides. All right? So can we get an objective answer on why they would say that?
President Haley, Dr. Clay, I think what it comes down to is there is a philosophy amongst a segment of ESA parents and some legislators that the department has no ability to regulate spending in any way, including this framework, and that the only limitation to spending by an ESA holder would be the maximum amount of their award. So if a student were to get $7,500 a year or $35,000 a year, that is the only thing that limits their spending, as long as they make the case that what they have purchased with those funds is educational in nature. And with parents being able to provide parent-prepared curriculum, a parent could justify any purchases that they make. So I think that's really philosophically where these differences are coming down to, where they are making the argument that we do not have the authority to regulate. For the three reasons that I included in my presentation, that is, the Department of Education strongly disagrees with their position, and legal precedent has supported our position.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Great. I believe, Member Meyerson, did you have some questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation, Mr. Ward. It is not your belief, based on the work that you've done over months and with, I'm assuming consulting your attorneys for the department, that any component of this is unlawful? Is that correct?
That is not our position, that any of this is unlawful.
And if somebody had a concern or wanted to continue to make an appeal or advocate in some way for a different position, if this handbook were to get passed, they would have the opportunity and the right to do that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a few myself. Just a few, I did have some questions about the link, I'll let Dr. Hightower feel free to go first.
Thank you so much, President Haley. I don't have questions, I have more of a comment. I know the Department of Education has really been going above and beyond. It is a topic that doesn't seem to have agreement by every side, so it's a pretty difficult situation, and they have really been open to listening, to providing feedback, to making changes month after month. So I just want to be appreciative of all the work that has taken place.
Thank you for your comment, Dr. Hightower. Just a few questions. Looking at page 22 of the handbook, this is sort of the new language that was added. I just would love some clarification. So is the specific circumstances and educational needs of the qualified student, and then the second bullet, whether the department has previously approved of the expense or item for the qualified student or for other qualified students in similar circumstances, the primary purpose of the expense or item based on ordinary and customary usage of the stated description, or of the expense or item, and then the fourth bullet, the cost or quantity of the expense or items is not greater than what meets students' educational needs and circumstances in relation to other readily available and reasonable alternatives. When I read through that, I appreciated the guidance, but it does seem quite subjective and not objective. And so is there going to be a certain standard? I can imagine any number of us are making a request, and whether you're going by the calculator, or the watch, or the microscope, we had all of those examples submitted to us, or the performance standard mixer versus the regular mixer, all those examples were provided in written comment. How are you going to ensure that an objective standard is universally applied rather than a more subjective process?
President Haley, as those types of expenses are coming in for approval, again, as we said in the handbook, this will be on a case-by-case basis. If, on the surface, it appears to be excessive in some form or fashion, we will look at what was submitted to us to justify why something above and beyond was needed. But again, this framework, I know you've said it's subjective versus objective, but we need some type of framework by which my 12 purchase review staff can review these types of things. One of the things about education freedom is that parents have the ability to engage and shop in a massive, open market. And so it's really difficult for anyone to be able to try to circumscribe all those things that are going to be allowable in an ESA program. And so for that reason, and because the vast majority of parents on this program, their students have such unique needs, the only way for us to evaluate that is going to be with some type of framework, which is what we have here, and what was submitted to us in terms of documentation for review. So the idea that we would ever have kind of this very objective checklist that we could easily go through to say something is allowable or not, is probably just never going to happen in the education freedom space.
That's certainly helpful. When I joined the board in 2022, the department had a list of all the different approved items. I know it was probably exhaustive and exhausting to go through. We heard about it often at our meetings in 2022, but that changed, and the board or the department, I believe, has taken away that approved list of all the different items that have been approved. In order to sort of ensure objectivity and not subjectivity, because I suspect we will hear about it in subsequent meetings, has the department thought through creating a list of all the approved items in order to help families, provide them guidance when they submit reimbursement or seek approval for purchases through the ESA program?
President Haley, so there are two points I'll make about that. One, as I said earlier, parents are on this program because they believe that their students' needs are very unique. So what might be allowable and approvable for one student may not be allowable or approvable for another student. Trying to have a list of curated approved items in a massive market in the space of education freedom is impossible. In fact, as we've had these conversations amongst ESA administrators from around the country, no one's done that. And there's a reason, because it's really just a fool's errand, I think, at this point. And so again, a framework is about as close as we get to laying out broad principles for what we will do to evaluate whether purchases are reasonable in the context of the student and the documentation that has been provided to us.
I did want to note that I appreciated in the handbook, in Chapter 5, on page 52, you went through the scenarios of student 1, 2, and what was allowable in the comparison. So I understand the difficulty that the ADE is facing when the uniqueness in creating and curating a child's education. So I appreciate that and appreciate what you guys are going up against, but at the same time, I'm just trying to anticipate if this handbook were approved, just the processes. At the same time, I value Member Meyerson's question that if an item is denied, a parent can certainly appeal that process. So I think, I don't know that I have too many more questions, but do, one other thing I did, there's been quite a few questions that we have heard and comments over the last number of months about just the automatically approve at or below $2,000. Earlier this year, in order to expedite the process, you all have begun to approve items, I think, at or under $2,000. We have heard numerous comments over the last number of months of parents whose expense have been denied. Can you explain a little bit about what is and what is not permissible, and while also addressing that those expenses would be subject to a risk-based auditing process?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Haley. So in this handbook, we actually addressed that, and that was the outcome of one of the meetings with some of the handbook's biggest critics. They thought that was confusing, misleading, and needed clarification, so we listened. And so what the handbook now says is, "It should be noted that all orders processed under the department's threshold for auto-fulfilled orders are not deemed approved by the department." for auto-fulfilled orders are not deemed approved by the department until they are audited or the timeframe to audit the orders has passed." So just to give some additional context, so as you said, back in December, we implemented a $2,000 threshold because at that point in time, I think we had a backlog of approximately 98,000 orders. And I think we were close to five months backed up. And that was just kind of, just growing geometrically. And so this was just kind of a losing proposition for us. The Parent Handbook Committee suggested that we create a threshold and move forward with it, and that's exactly what we did. So every item that, that expense that comes through the ESA program above $2,000 is still being prospectively reviewed. So there is no auto-fulfilled or approved items above $2,000. For those that come in at $2,000 or less, as we clarified here, they're not approved, they're just auto-fulfilled because for those orders that are coming in under that threshold, we will be auditing a portion of them. And any items that were purchased and were not allowable or did not meet the expectations moving forward, forward of this framework, then we would begin to work with the account holder to either pay us back, or they would have the right to appeal.
Do any other members have questions? Dr. Hagerman?
Executive Ross, can you talk us through what, what options we have on this item?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Dr. Hagerman, so the board is, has two voting options in front of it today for the handbook. One is to approve the draft as submitted today by the Arizona Department of Education. And then one is to reject the handbook that is submitted today and call for the use of the most recently approved handbook by the board, which would be the handbook from FY '23. So those are the two options available to the board today.
Just a question, and perhaps this would require executive. If members had concerns about the handbook and chose to, did not accept the handbook as presented today, what would be the implications of, on ESA account holders? Would it just go back to the 2023, 24? Could we ask the Department of Education to continue to work with families and ESA account holders to come to present another book to, handbook to us? What are sort of the options that we have and its implication on the existing program?
President Haley, members of the board. That would probably be a more appropriate question for legal counsel. So the board might want to, or may choose to go into executive session to receive legal counsel if it so chooses.
Do members have any questions about that or? Superintendent Horn?
If there's an answer, I don't know why it can't be in the open.
So the, the board may choose to convene an executive session for purpose of consultation or discussion with its attorney. If the, if the board would like to receive guidance in open session, it can certainly do that. But it would just be recommended to receive guidance in executive session to, to avoid a potential waiver of attorney-client privilege.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Do you want to perhaps ask your question again? And let me see if it.
I'll try. My question was, in the event that the board chose not to approve the ESA handbook, could the, is there an option for the department to present a new handbook even after the current, or the new handbook year has started? So the new handbook starts July 1, 2025, to June 2026. I'm just somewhat curious, given individuals are signing contracts for the next school year.
So if, if the handbook that is currently before the board today is not passed, then as Executive Director Ross said, the, the prior approved handbook would be the operative handbook. I'm not sure if that answered your question, Madam President.
And again, normally, could the board send the department back to amend the handbook and present us a new one even after July 1, 2025?
Yes, under the statute, or excuse me, under the board's regulations, if the board adopts the yearly handbook after July 1, the newly adopted handbook would become effective immediately following adoption. So there, so there is a route to approve a handbook after July 1. It, you know, sort of might muddy like the, the sequence of like what handbook is for, for what year. But if that's expressed in the handbook, then that might cure that. But there certainly is that option for, you know, another handbook.
Thank you. Dr. Webke?
Just for a point of clarification, I know the board's role in this is very limited. It's the approval of this handbook. And, but I heard something earlier, so I just want clarification. It was always my understanding that this, on, in March, at the March meeting, the handbook is presented. And I would imagine, and I've made some assumptions along the way, so now I would like clarification, that if there's going to be any changes to the handbook again or revisions, that those would be in an updated one that would be presented in March 2026, correct?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, Dr. Webke. Historically, that has been the practice. So the, the, the general schedule that the board has followed in the past four years has been to have an update from the department, either December or January, on the progression of the development of the handbook. Have the draft handbook presented in either February or March. Historically, the board has requested a February presentation just for some extra time. That's not always been an option. And then the board, it's a voting item in March, and the board can vote to approve or not approve, in this case, a table till April, and then a move to June.
Thank you.
And additionally, I'll, I'll provide some clarification on the statute. So what I had quoted from before was the board's regulation. So in terms of the statute, the statute directs that on or before July 1 of each year, "The department shall develop an applicant and participant handbook that includes information relating to policies and processes of Arizona ESAs." "That handbook per statute shall comply with the rules adopted by the State Board of Education." So in, in terms of a timeline, by July 1, the department has to develop the handbook. Under the board's rules, the, the board is, is directed to adopt the handbook. But, you know, what, what draft ultimately gets, gets adopted is certainly, you know, the, the conversation between the board and the department.
Any other questions or comments from members of the board? Okay. I guess the next item, next order of business is to, do I have a motion? I guess the next is to, a motion to approve the draft ESA handbook. So do I have a motion that the board adopt the attached ESA handbook, FY '26, for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented in the board's materials today? And that the ESA handbook FY '26 become effective July 1, 2025? Do I have a motion? Superintendent makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Hightower?
Dr. Hightower seconds it. Great. All in favor, say aye.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, we should do this as a roll call vote.
We'll do a roll call.
President Haley?
I'd like to explain my vote. I will vote no, but it's, I want to commend the department on removing the caps and the multi-year expenditures, but I have some concerns with the description by which they will measure and evaluate approvals.
Dr. Hightower, excuse me, Dr. Hagerman?
I'll explain my vote to you. I'm going to vote yes, just in choosing the current version versus the one two years ago. I would choose this version.
Superintendent Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Clay?
Yes.
Dr. Cruz Rivera?
Yes.
Dr. Cor?
I'd like to explain my vote, if, if I may. Hard to believe, but I'm in my ninth year on, on this board, and I've, I've, I've seen this program grow to 90,000-plus participants. I've enjoyed, month after month, hearing the success of this program. I love when we have some, some actual students come and speak to us. It's, it's been profound. Parents, we have heard you. Hard caps have been removed. Concessions have been made. Negotiations have occurred. Yes, ambiguity still exists. I once worked for a wonderful woman who said, "Daniel, we all want to know with great certainty that which cannot be known." We find ourselves in that situation here. We have a choice to trust, empower, and hold accountable the department. Or we can, we can go to our worst fears and, and believe that that cannot be done, and it'll be discriminatory or, or, or not effective. I'm going to choose the former. Mr. John Ward, prove your critics wrong. And we wish you the best of luck. Continue the town halls, continue the communication, and with that, I vote yes.
Dr. Hightower?
Thank you so much. I'll explain my vote as well. The authority that we have as a state board of education is quite limited. There's a lot of progress that has been made in the different options that families have, but there's still work to be done by the legislative body in funding, in accountability, in many, many areas. But I do appreciate and commend the Arizona Department of Education for all the work they put in, and with that, I vote yes.
Member Myerson?
Yes.
Dr. Webke?
Before I just say my vote, first of all, I want to thank the department. I know how hard the work is and balancing act. And I also, as one of the new board members, I want to thank the parents and the students that have come to testify because I have learned so much about this program in the past months, and I have heard you. And I've really changed my opinion on many, many things over time. So I really thank you for that. And just the patience that you've had with questions that I might have. I would like to encourage, it sounds like this is an annual thing. And so I would, and I don't mean to make it flippant, because it's not. I would really like to encourage the ADE, being that I have sat in those shoes there, of having regular, ongoing meetings with the parent community, both in-person and virtual, so that we can reach every corner of Arizona. And I know that that is a huge ask and a huge lift. I participated in the town hall, and while I found it very informative, it is limiting. That format is limiting for a lot of people. And so if we could find a way to have ongoing communication throughout the year so that we can see what's working, what's not working, I think that that would be very helpful as well. But I cannot thank you enough. And I also, thinking about Dr. Clay, I think this is a great place to engage our county superintendents, too, in terms of these meetings and partners. So with all that said, I vote yes.
President Haley, the motion passes.
Awesome. Okay.
Superintendent Horn, the motion passed eight to one.
Great. Moving on to item 5C. Executive Director Ross, is a presentation, discussion, possible action to close rulemaking procedures.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. As part of the work of the State Board of Education, Special Education Evaluation Subcommittee that met last year, there was a recommendation for a rule change to the board. The rule change calls for two additions to Rule R 72-401, effectively calling for public schools to make sure that the point of contact for special education is very readily and easily found on their website. And then a second call for, in a review of data meeting, so a student who is already on an IEP, they hold another meeting, they decide they need more data, that you, an issuing of a prior written notice is required. It can be done in the same meeting. And so just clarifying, codifying that that issue of that prior written notice can be done in the same meeting. So with that, I'm ready to take, any questions?
Do you have any questions for members of the board? Dr. Hagerman?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
He's ready to go. All right. Do I have a motion that the board adopt the draft of proposed rules and closed rulemaking procedures for AAC R 72-401, the timeline for the issuance of prior written notice and availability of contract information?
I'll make that motion.
Dr. Dr. Hagerman gets the first, and Dr. Clay gets the second. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. All right, now we'll move on to item 5D. Policy Director Yanez, would you like to update us on legislative affairs-related issues?
Yes. Good afternoon, President Haley.
Boy, Rico, you really empty a room, don't you?
I know. That's how it goes every, every meeting. My voice is a little too monotone, I think. All right, let's talk about numbers. So I don't want to do a ton of speculating, so I'm going to keep my comments short on the state budget discussions that are ongoing right now. But the Senate and the governor's office had negotiated and sent a proposal to the House last week that largely included continuation funding for K-12. And the House is meeting today to either take up that budget or move on a continuation budget to extend some of the negotiations a little bit closer to the deadline. But I would like to hand off my update to Member Myerson to speak to a couple of issues that she wanted to discuss with us today.
Thank you so much. I, I just put together like two very quick slides. I don't know if we're able to throw those up there, Melissa. Thank you. They're very in-depth. You'll see them. But I think what, especially, you know, I was talking with Sean, and we were sort of debating whether or not there would be, the legislature would still be in session, and it turns out that they are at this meeting, even though we talked a month ago and thought they'd be, be done. But I think what, what, I just wanted to use a couple of minutes during the, this update to just sort of highlight two slides that I just threw up here of where Arizona ranks on our most recent NAEP scores, both in math, and then don't yet turn it to, to the literacy one yet, Melissa. But you can see where we are here on math compared to Louisiana and Mississippi. And I picked these two states because we've read a lot and heard a lot about the incredible work that they've done specifically to, to, to support third-grade literacy. And so if we see where we are here in math, which obviously is still not great, if you turn to the next slide and show where we are compared to these two states with literacy, it's, it's far more dark, yes, very black box. But far, far more dramatic and far more concerning. And as an operator of schools that supports, obviously, across kindergarten through eighth grade, and given the fact that there's currently no, aside from the continuation funding that, that Rico has just named, which is obviously great and important, there are no new policy supports or no new funding that has been dedicated to support kindergarten through third-grade literacy. The department has one ask out there currently that has not been made, that did not make it into either the House or the Senate's budget, which is just an additional $2 million to support increasing the number of literacy coaches in our highest need schools. That's only to bring the number up to 75. But when you look at states like Mississippi and Louisiana, they had at least 125 literacy coaches across their state. So our, the ask of $2 million isn't even getting us to the 125, which clearly is one of several indicators or several initiatives that those two states used, but is, is a highly impactful one. And the data already supports that the literacy coaches that are currently working in schools are already having really sort of game-changing results for, for children. And so I would just like to use the last minutes of Rico's reporting here, which obviously is not a ton to report yet on, on what's happening in the House and Senate, to just make a final plug that, if at all possible, for anyone to continue to advocate for at least that $2 million of additional. least that $2 million of additional funding to get into the budget, if not more. But I think for all of us as a state board and in our, our work post, being on state boards, you know, at the end of the day, presumably, Dr. Cor, when you get kids coming to, to college, had they been reading at third grade, that would have been a, a pretty game-changing and gap-closing opportunity for them. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Rico.
Thank you. I don't have any other updates, President Haley and Vice President Hagerman. I'm, I am available for questions, though.
Any other questions? Dr., oh, it's like, Dr. Hagerman, I thought you were about to ask a question. I just, yeah.
Just one statement on that data. The notice that the learning losses during the pandemic in reading are less than the learning losses that have happened in reading since the pandemic. So it's just, the notions, it's, it's, we are not, not only are we not closing the gaps from the pandemic, it's getting worse.
Superintendent Horn?
Yes, the department is making available as an option from the one and a half percent that we're taking from Title I, although we're, we're hoping most schools will take the Conmigo AI in the classroom. We're making literacy coaches one of the options.
That's great. We have another, Dr. Clay, I see you have your hand up.
I have just a quick question about our NAEP data. Included in this data, do we, do we have any idea what ESA or private schools are doing, or is that they're not included in this data at all?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, Dr. Clay, private schools and ESA students are not required to take the statewide exams, and so they are not included in this data set. This would be reflective of public charter and public district students.
So here's, here's my question. Is this data accurate?
Sorry. Once, I'm sorry, Dr. Clay, one, one section, so one second, I'm sorry. I was thinking of the statewide exams. Yes, private schools, a sample of private school students are included in NAEP. So, yeah, so this data would be reflective of a, a sampling of those students. My apologies, I was thinking of the statewide exams.
No. The, the reason why I asked is, does this really reflect what's going on in our state? Are we ensuring that we know what all the students, where they're at? Or is just, is, is just a snapshot on a small group of students, where we have another group that we have no idea what the status is on them?
I just, I just a quick comment about the NAEP. It's a sampling across the country of both public and private students. So it is a reflection of Arizona students across the board, not just like, the NAEP test doesn't test every single public school student, just like it doesn't test every single private school student. So it's a sampling. And I should note that while Mississippi does have a charter and a private school option, it's pretty limited compared to Arizona's. Louisiana's is much more substantive with private school options and charter options. So.
Thank you.
I just would like to associate myself with Member Meyerson's comment. We have talked at different points, while it's not an explicit comment, or one of our goals to support specific funding, we have said for our 2025 early literacy priority, that we would support efforts like this. So I wish we could influence, we could like, do a magical wand or something and do it over the legislature that they had and some additional funds. That would be great. So anyway, thanks, Member Meyerson. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, well, with that, we wrap up number five, or Section Five. We're gonna, if it's okay, and thank you, Rico, for being diligent. We look forward to hearing if they pass a budget. So maybe at our August meeting, we'll get an update. So we'll now move to Item Six. This is a call to the public. This is a time for the public to comment on items on today's consent portion of the enforcement actions. As a reminder, the board does not respond directly during the call to the public. Additionally, speakers are not allowed to cede their time to another speaker. Our personal attacks are not appropriate. Due to the large number of speakers, we have limited the time to two minutes. And with that, Deputy Director DePlante, do, have we received any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, nobody has registered for this call to the public.
Okay, thank you. So moving on, I'd like to take the enforcement actions as a single motion. Is there an item or items from the consent agenda for enforcement actions that a board member would like to pull and discuss? Seeing that there are none, I would like to approve items 7A, 1 through 12, 7B, 1, in a single motion. Do I have a motion?
I move approval as presented.
Dr. Cor makes motion.
I'll second.
Dr. Hagerman makes a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, moving on to Item Eight. This is a time for the public to comment on items on the general session portion of the enforcement actions. As a reminder, the board does not respond directly during the call to public. Additionally, speakers are not allowed to cede their time to another speaker, and personal attacks are not appropriate. As we have had a large number of speakers today, we're limiting comments to two minutes. And with that, Deputy Director DePlante, have we received any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, nobody has registered for this call to the board.
Okay. Given this, I would like to, first of all, are there any items that we would like to pull for discussion? Seeing that there are none, I'd like to take a single motion, or take them all, vote, I'd like a motion to approve them all in a single motion, and that is Items A, 1 through 11, Item B, 1 through 8. Do I have a motion?
I move approval as presented.
And I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And with that, Item 10, Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, thank you so much for a productive meeting. As a reminder, there is no July meeting. So the next time the board will convene will be on Monday, August 25 for a regular board meeting. And then our board retreat will be Tuesday, August 26, both of them in this room. More details to come for board members as we get closer. And thank you all so much. Have a wonderful and safe summer. President Haley, you need to adjourn.
Oh, do I have a motion to adjourn? Sorry. Oh, we just adjourned. Oh, at 12:38 PM. Sorry, my brain is mush.